Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council, which is being held remotely in terms of Section 43 of the Local Governance in Scotland Act 2003. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting which is being recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting, but if this is not possible, the Committee Services Officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on, your face will appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Would members of the press and public please not post messages in the chat? Where items are for noting or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat, otherwise the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the committee and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings and the terms of the councillor's code of conduct will also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries, convener, so I will now ask the Committee Services Officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Thanks, Roger. Convener?
Present.
Councillor Alexander?
I'm here.
Councillor Anderson?
Present.
Lord Provost?
Present.
Deputy Lord Provost?
Present.
Bailey Dawson?
I'm here.
Councillor El Nakla?
Here.
Councillor Flynn?
Good evening, here.
Councillor Lynn?
Present.
Bailey Roberts?
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Rome?
Good evening, present.
Bailey Sowers?
Yes, I'm here.
Councillor Short?
Here.
Councillor Smith?
I'm here.
Councillor Tolland?
Aye, 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 I'm here.
Bailey Keenan?
Present.
Councillor Crookshank?
Present.
Councillor Finnegan?
Here.
Councillor McHugh?
Present.
Councillor McCarvin?
Present.
Councillor Malone?
I'm here.
I've received apologies from Councillor Scullen. Councillor Shears?
Present.
Bailey Wright?
Present.
Bailey MacPherson?
Good evening, present.
Councillor Coleman?
Good evening.
Councillor Creighton?
Present.
Councillor Duncan?
Here.
Bailey Scott?
Here.
Mrs McBean? Mrs McBean? My micro is absent. I've also had apologies from Mrs Lek. Mr Chohan? My micro is absent. Mr Baxter?
Evening.
Miss Barclay?
Hello, I'm here.
Mrs Javid? Mr Anderson McGinnis?
Present.
And finally, Miss Cox?
Present.
Thank you. That concludes the roll call.
Thank you. Unfortunately, I think my dog in the background also wants to make it known that she's present as well, which hasn't stopped barking for the last couple of minutes. So apologies if you hear any barking in the background. I think we can move on to the next set of business, please.
Item one, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations?
I have one here regarding the cross my toes. My children at one of the schools that are getting talked about.
Okay, thank you, I've got that noted.
Mr Many, I see you wish to come in.
Thank you, convener. Given that Mr Anderson McGinnis has declared an interest and will require to leave a meeting, can I suggest that with your agreement, with the agreement of the committee and with the agreement that Councillor Coleman, that that item of business be dealt with last?
Yeah, I'm happy with that if that's suitable to the committee.
I also agree.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to the next set of business, please, Arlene.
Okay. Item two, parents, pupil and teacher representation on the Children and Families Services Committee. This is for approval.
Yeah, so that is for now, but just obviously welcome all those members back to the committee who were on previously and welcome new members as well. We look forward to working with you over the next week. Well, and feel free to take part in the meeting in any way that you wish to, but it's nice to see you all back. And with that, can we move on to the next item, please?
Okay, so we'll now move on to item four, consultation on closure of Law Nursery. You have a report before you.
Okay, Bailey MacPherson, I see you've indicated you want to ask a question.
Yeah, I've had a, I have a couple of questions, thanks very much, convener. Could I maybe just make a very minor point though? I did actually wonder about the relevance or appropriateness really of what's included in paragraph 1.4.1 and 1.2. Educational benefits of a closure. Frankly, a closure is a closure and the suggestion that there are, that other facilities can provide an additional year, whilst true, is not in a, is not in any way, shape or form an educational benefit of a closure as these facilities are already there. So I really, you know, what's the old phrase, lipstick on a pig, do you know what I mean? I understand, this isn't the council's fault that Law Nursery is closing, I fully understand that, but I do really wonder about the appropriateness of these particular paragraphs. That said, I've got a couple of questions. One is, I would just really like some indication as to what engagement thus far there has been with, in particular, and obviously there's a consultation and obviously parents and carers are going to be consulting, I understand that. I'm just really wondering about the teaching staff, teaching and support staff that are currently based in Law Nursery. And whilst, I've got another unrelated question and that's really about, I asked this actually group leaders, but I didn't really ever get any feedback on it. And that was, we're in a rather unique position with Law Nursery in the sense that the facility, Dundee City Council facility sits on somebody else's ground. And I did actually ask and I would just like some clarification to give us reassurance that there are no other nurseries or other educational establishments or indeed any other council buildings that are in that situation so that we don't have this sort of situation. Again, I think it's probably pretty unique, but I think it would be helpful if Children's and Families Service could just give us a reassurance that we're not going to be back here in relation to another facility at some point in the future.
Okay, thank you for those questions, Bailey MacPherson. I'll first of all pass over to Mrs May and then you might actually want to pass over to other officers as you see fit. Audrey, if you want to make a start.
Okay, thank, thank you, convener, and thanks Bailey MacPherson for your points and your questions and you'll understand the format of the wording that we have to put into a report when we're looking at closure of any educational establishment and it's quite a clear template laid out there that we have to complete, include an educational benefits and when it's in quite an unusual situation, as already been mentioned. So it maybe doesn't make the usual sense, if you like, but we do need to complete that part of the overall template for us per Scottish Government regulations around this and Education Scotland regulations around closing any establishment. But I will hand over to our manager for early years, we have Lesley Gibble on the call, who can tell you a wee bit about the engagement she's had with her staff so far in terms of teaching and support staff. So I'll allow Lesley to answer that question, but I'll also say that I'm not aware of any other build-ins just now that are in the scenario that you've, you've mentioned, Bailey MacPherson, but I will look across the screen to see if any of my city development colleagues who look after property with us and you'll know that in a situation like this, we work in great partnership with city development, they may have some information that I don't have just now, but I'll ask Lesley to answer your other questions about staff engagement. Thank you. Thanks, Rog. Rosie Robin is absolutely confirming that, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bailey MacPherson, for your question regarding the staff. So I went out and met with the whole staff team, including Teyside contract staff and talked to them through the position that we found ourselves in. And we offered the staff a number of choices because we absolutely understood, you know, the importance of staff being fully consulted with. So all staff were given the option to stay in Law Nursery this year or if they preferred to move to another local authority nursery, that was entirely possible. And we asked staff to give us three choices, the first choice, second choice, third choice. All staff who asked to move this year were given their first choice of new nursery and were all delighted with that. And the staff that have chosen to stay will also go through the same process in that we will engage with those staff and we will offer them where the positions are in the council that are available and they will be given the option to give us their choices.
I'm very grateful for that response, Lesley, that is reassuring. I think Mr Press would have his hand up, I don't know if he was wanting to add to the thing about facilities, I don't want to put officers on the spot, I wouldn't mind something and I'm thinking more in a corporate sense than simply children's and families. Obviously, today we're talking about an educational establishment, but we go back to the point, do we actually run any council services for owning the building but not owning the ground that we're on? I just think we'd like the reassurance on that. One last point, I take the point, Mrs May, about the fact that the section on educational benefits of a closure may have to be completed, but the obvious thing to have done in that particular case, whilst pointing out these already, you know, that there are other facilities there, I don't see that as an educational benefit. The bottom line on it is we're losing an educational facility and I just feel that could have been worded a little bit better, but I do take your point that the paragraph as such has to be completed, but as I say, I'm not sure that pointing out the other facilities elsewhere who already offer these facilities is somehow an educational benefit to the closure of Law Nursery. Now, thank you, convener.
No, thank you, I'll bring Mr Press in in a second if he wants to answer that. I take your point about that paragraph, I think we did kind of scratch our heads a little bit about how to answer that and put something we felt was appropriate, but I think certainly this, hopefully this is the, as you said, a unique experience for us where we're having to close a facility that's not because of us but because somebody else has owns the building and has shut it down. So I certainly, hopefully that won't happen again, but I think we will certainly reflect on those comments you made in the future should we have to do that. But Mr Press, you want to answer the substantive point regarding other facilities that we might lease from other, other people?
Many thanks, convener. I am not aware of any other nursery or other educational facilities that are leased in, but I think probably safest to have a go away and do detail check with the property team. In terms of other service accounts, obviously there are examples such as the Wellgate Library where we rent the library on a long-term lease from the owners of the Wellgate Centre, but we'll come back to members with confirmation if there are any other examples.
That's very helpful, thank you.
Okay, I don't see MDL wishing to come in, so can this be agreed? Okay, okay, Arlene, can we move on to the next item, please?
Item five, mental health and wellbeing supporting services. You have a report before you.
Okay, yes, as I said, there's a report in front of you, does MD have any questions or any comments wish to make? Miss Barclay, I see you have a question.
Hi, thank you. And my question relates to a couple of paragraphs. First of all, on page 12, 4.4, we talk about the counselling in schools and there are four community mental health and wellbeing services named in the section above. I assume that it's them that are providing most of this counselling in schools. If that's so, I just wondered if there was any movement on, I remember a while ago there was a proposal to have guidance teachers in primary schools. I wondered if that's still something that's been looked at, because later on, on page 19, in 4.9.1, it says that 70.6% of pupils surveyed said that they felt they had an adult to talk to in school and that's fantastic that so many have that, but what about the 30% who don't? Do you know, my worry is, who are they talking to? If there's no one at school, do we know that they have someone at home? So I just wondered where we were with the guidance teachers in primary schools and who's providing the counselling, please?
Okay, Mrs May, do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Jodie, thanks, convener. Pleased to see that, you know, that we've made so much progress and we're able to bring back this progress report in terms of supporting the mental health and emotional wellbeing of our children and young people. These are, there are always more to do, Jodie, as you're aware, and certainly any further discussions about what else we can do to support primary, happy to take that back, you know, to the team and look at, you know, part of this work as well, as you'll be aware, has been developed across the Teyside Regional Improvement Collaborative. So we're working with colleagues in health across Teyside as well as our partners in Perth and Angus councils. So happy to take your comments. I'm, I'm not aware of discussions around guidance teachers in schools, but certainly I would absolutely support your, the point you've raised that all children needs someone to talk to, you know, and so if we can look at that in a different way in the service, happy to take that conversation back to the team and explore different ways to do this.
Miss Barclay, are you happy with that or do you want to come back in?
No, that's great, thank you.
Okay, no problem. Okay, I don't see MDL wishing to come in, can this report be agreed? Okay, okay, Arlene.
Item six, our promise, you have a report before you.
Again, the report is there in front of you, does any have any questions? Councillor Creighton, see you want to come in?
Yes, thank you, convener, just a couple of questions. At 7.1 on page 38, the progress in reducing the number of care experienced children and young people is reported and highlights that Dundee still has a higher level compared to the Scottish average. Are officers confident that the declining trend will continue and are there any further steps that can be taken in particular for the year groups zero to five, where our proportion is significantly higher than the Scottish average to maintain the trend of the decline numbers in the future? And just to quickly, my second question was, is pleasing to read at 7.1, the really good news of 100% of positive outcomes experienced by young people in 21 to 22. And I appreciate the point made in the report that you cannot guarantee 100% every year, but nonetheless, it's a really good outcome and will hopefully be maintained. Can I also ask what further information about the work mentioned in the report with prospective employers and the Chamber of Commerce to provide sustainable opportunities to ensure positive destinations are maintained over time? Thank you.
Again, I'll just hand over to Mrs May to start the answer to your question.
Thanks again, convener, and thank you to Councillor Creighton and thank you for acknowledging the good work that's led to these, these good outcomes and that we would obviously want to continue, but every year we are dealing with different individual children, young people, as I'm sure you're aware, but our aspiration would always be to have that 100%. I'm going to hand over to Glenn Lloyd, who is our Head of Service for Children's Services, Children's Social Work, because there's, there's a lot of different strands of work going on to make sure that we're reducing the numbers of young people going into care in Dundee and still, you know, emergency situations will arise, as you know, because families sometimes are dealing with crisis, but it is our ambition to keep our children in Dundee in line with the promise. It's our ambition to keep our children with their families where that's the best outcome for them. It's our ambition to keep our children in their own community. And so there's lots of work going on that Glenn might want to pick up a wee bit more detail around that and also, again, great, great start to partnership with employers and I know that Glenn would want to see a few more details around that as well. So I'll ask Glenn Lloyd to come in and pick up some of that detail, thank you.
Thank you, Audrey, and thank you for the questions, Councillor Creighton. The first question there around numbers, I think we can with some confidence, hesitatingly say some confidence, say that we will, we believe we will be able to continue to reduce the numbers coming into the city, but equally, we're cognizant of the fact that we have some quite challenging demographics across the city and much of this is dependent upon not just the work of the Children and Families Service but work right across the partnership. But what you'll see in the report though as well is that at the moment, there's a broad range, a very broad range of preventative activity that's taking place to try and achieve that. So we've outlined the work, for instance, in relation to name persons and the addressing neglect and enhancing wellbeing initiative, the fast online referral tracking system, the FORT system. There's work carried out within the social work teams, supporting families who aren't yet care experienced but are on the edges of care and are at risk of becoming care experienced. And there's work that we deliver in partnership with the third sector, either on a commission basis or in partnership with them again. Excuse me. Excuse me, a cleaner just came into the bin as I was talking, but a broad range of preventative activity that hopefully you'll see in the report and then going forwards, building on that, we now, as you'll also see, have the whole family wellbeing funding and the criteria for that is enhancement of preventative support. You'll see in the report as well that we're getting much better, I think, at using data to promote a more targeted approach and as you rightly say, there's a disproportionate number of nought to five-year-olds who are care experienced in the city. And in terms of that whole family wellbeing funding, we'll be encouraging providers to target that particular group who we know are more vulnerable. Babies and infants, pre-primary school children are more vulnerable to being at risk of harm whilst, whilst at home. So hopefully that answers your question in terms of the numbers and the targeted work and ongoing efforts to reduce, reduce the number of care experienced children, young people. And in relation to the work with the Chamber of Commerce, well, they approached us because they've received additional funding from the Independent Care Review to enhance employability approaches towards care leavers and young people leaving, leaving school. We've had an initial conversation with them at their headquarters down at the docks and a number of employers from across the city. And those conversations have involved us exploring the possibility of them being more creative and more flexible in terms of how they employ care experienced children and people and how they support them once they are employed. The next stage of that approach will involve us having similar conversations with a group of care experienced children and people. And then what we intend to do is match the two sets of responses together to deliver more bespoke, more flexible approaches. As you see in the report, we've had 100% positive destinations last year, that related to 17 care leavers, 17 pupils leaving school. It'll be challenging to achieve that same figure going forwards, but as you can see in the report, we're keen to get as close to that as possible and the Chamber of Commerce work will help with that, as well as work, in fact, I should say, that we're carrying out from within the council over and above, over and above that.
Thank you for that, Mr Lloyd. Councillor Creighton, are you happy with that answer?
Yeah, very happy, thank you very much for giving me that detailed answer. And yeah, the report was, just highlighted the really good work that we're doing and hopefully the trajectory can keep on declining. And the phrase I was using in the pandemic a lot, led by the data, I think that's what we need for this and if we're led by the data, hopefully we can see the continuing trends to go. So thank you both, thank you.
Councillor Short, I see you have your hand up, do you wish to come in?
Yes, convener, it was just a little comment, another little part of the many field board has been given another bright colour and it was thanks to Scrap Antex and nine young people who were care experienced and it just looks absolutely amazing. And I was recently on a religious pilgrimage from Baxter Park to the Quaker House in Whitehall Street and we actually stopped off there, not particularly because of the mural, but it was where we used to have a synagogue in the city and people were absolutely captivated by the, the presence of the mural and then when they actually heard the story, it meant even more so if people take time and go and look at it and see all the stuff, all the heart that's gone into it from the young people, it's really amazing. And these are the kind of partnerships that will build that confidence and is much better than some of the things that we're seeing at the moment in our streets. And it was really great to see that the council are reaching out and working across all these different mediums to try and show that this is the city that's for everybody and that care retention is there.
Thank you, Councillor Short, for those comments, I certainly think they'll be appreciated by the officers and the young people themselves. Okay, I don't see MDL wishing to come in, so can this report be agreed? Okay. Okay, Arlene, can we move on to the next item, please?
Item seven, Teyside Plan for Children, Young People and Families Annual Progress Report 2021 to 2022. You have a report before you.
Okay, Councillor Duncan, I see you wish to come in with a question?
Yeah, thanks, convener. It's just a question around the virtual campus mentioned on page 76 and just a few things struck me, you mean, the intention of Whiteford Advanced Hires is certainly a good one, but I just have to say that, you know, the number of participants in year one was only five in Dundee, which doesn't seem very high to me. I do note that obviously there's, you know, there's, there's further steps, including widening the curriculum offer and more learners in year two, so that might be good. But I'm just wondering, you know, how well is the virtual campus as a whole, how well was it actually promoted and publicised amongst senior pupils, given that the uptake doesn't seem to be high so far?
Okay, I'll pass over to Mrs May, does she answer the question?
Again, thanks, convener, and thank you to Councillor Duncan. Our Head of Education may wish to come in with this, but certainly we talk with our, with our secondary schools across the state councils around the areas that might be on offer and that young people are maybe struggling to find in their school curriculum. So that they'll be widening the offer by offering that virtual campus. And so my understanding would be absolutely that, you know, this is discussed across the schools with the typical folks who'd be involved, so the guidance teams when they're working with young people around subject choices, looking at their career pathway or their pathway beyond school. So, so looking at all, all of the subjects that they need and they might not all get them all in their schools because of the small numbers. As you know, that, that's often where we, we move into our consortia arrangements or our campus arrangement across the city schools, but this has given us an even wider offer because we're bringing in colleagues from Perth and Kinnos Council and Angus Council. So the virtual offer is based on what young people are telling us that they need and what schools are telling us, you know, that where they have gaps and what then therefore they can offer that, that wider choice. So I'll see if Paul Fleming wants to add any more to that, obviously working more closely with our schools now. And Paul, I don't know if you want to add anything.
Great, thank you very much, Audrey, and thanks for the question. Councillor Duncan, it's just to build on what Audrey has said, it's a combination of what Audrey said and also resources available and it was very much a trial as well so that we can measure the, the impact of this. So Michelle Lewis, who is our officer, works very closely with three authorities and also recruiting teachers, so it's about availability of subject specialists and to be able to make sure that we have the quality for these as well. But in terms of publicising and online information, newsletter as we, we shared with young people in February, as well as Audrey says, information direct to teachers in advance, some months in advance of sign up for this. So as you'll see from the paper, we're looking to build on this again this year and will continue to evaluate the effectiveness and the impact as well as the wishes and needs of our young people too. And we are also working with colleagues in other regional improvement collaboratives, so I have a meeting soon with Forfali and Miss Lothian to see what we can learn from other areas and also the national e-learning offer as well to see how we can build on the success of this plan project here in Teyside. Thank you.
Okay, Councillor Duncan, are you happy with that response?
Yeah, thanks, convener, yeah, I mean, given someone of my, my vintage, you know, virtual campuses, as I said, not something that I ever took part in. And, you know, my thoughts are that there's no substitute for real teaching face-to-face, but in, in, in effect, I think Mr Baxter probably is thinking along the lines of... But in in in, and I think I think Mr Baxter probably is thinking along those lines as well. But nevertheless, in 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 the real world, where, you know, unfortunately, not every school is likely to have all the teachers they want in every subject. I I just feel that this offers at least some potential and therefore I'm keen to see it, you know, explored at least. But as I say, it's it's not a substitute for real teaching.
No, absolutely. And I think your your points are well made. And I think also you you see this response from the executive director. Mr Baxter, you wish to come in?
Yeah, thanks, convenor. It was basically to echo that point, councillor Duncan, that, you know, nothing beats, you know, face to face teaching. Unfortunately, the kind of the campus model has been in existence for a while. Because actually, nothing beats getting taught in your own school, in your own community. You know, we've been bussing kids about for a while. It's not something that we're huge fans of, you know, from the teacher's side, you know. But it's been a unnecessary, well, it's necessary evil, I guess. The one thing I would raise, though, with working with colleagues from, you know, Angus and Parthenon and Ross is, of course, we've all got different, you know, holiday dates. You know, we've all got different, you know, times that you've only got to look at the October holidays. So the the there are things that if we're doing more working as part of, you know, the the Tayside Collaborative, there are things that need to be looked at, which is, you know, the homogenisation of holidays. But there's also terms and conditions as well, um, you know. And I could, you know, probably talk to, you know, Audrey and Paul in, you know, great depth about, you know, what happens if something went wrong. You know, how is that then dealt with, right, from a trade union perspective? So there's still a lot of things to iron out. But yeah, councillor Duncan, to to reiterate that point, nothing beats face to face teaching. But also face to face teaching in your in your community, in your school.
Thank you for that that comment, Mr Baxter. I think we we all agree that, that, you know, and I think it has been, as you said, a necessarily evil to make sure that young people got all the choices that they want and need, specifically for those who want to go on to to higher education. But certain those points you made, and I'm sure, you know, officers are always willing to to sit down and meet with trade unions to have these kind of conversations. So look forward, I'm sure I look forward to that in in the near future. Um, I don't see MDL wishing to come in. Can this report be agreed? Okay, thank you. So Arlene, can we move on to the next item, please?
Yeah, that takes us back to item three on the agenda, decommissioning school crossing patrols downfield primary school. This has been placed on the agenda at the request of councillor Coleman.
Okay, thank you. I think my dog again wants to be heard, so she's just started barking at just the wrong time. But councillor Coleman, I'll hand over you just to to start this this item.
Yeah, thank you, Mr convenor. Yes, um, there was a, there'd been a wee bit of a process to for the removal of school for cross school patrollers at the specified locations on the agenda. But the convenor and I have had some conversations prior to this meeting. And we're going to hold off on a decision because there's some safer school streets to come into force at some of the locations and we'll see how things go. And so I don't think we'll make any decisions tonight and we'll see if there's anything to come back in the future. But I think that's all there is. There's not much to discuss this evening.
Yeah, no, I think, you know, councillor Coleman, thank you for having a really constructive conversation with myself over this. So to be clear, especially for all the committee members and particularly other staff, Martin councillors, you know, as we were, the last City Development Committee, we agreed the whole safer streets around schools, around Downfield Primary School in particular, and with some of the sites that are are mentioned in this report. So I think the the suggestion I put to councillor Coleman, and councillor Coleman was was more than happy to agree to, was that we should not consider this tonight. We should allow safer streets to go through its whole process. We will keep the school cross patrollers in place for that time period. And then obviously, once safer streets is actually firmly in place, we can review it again to see what needs to be happened. And I think councillor Coleman quite graciously has asked that, has said that this item should be withheld to snout. And we've obviously more than happy to bring her back if necessary. But Bailey Keenan, you have a comment that you wish to make?
Yeah, convenor, I mean, it would have been something that, you know, I'd be prepared to support the retention of the individual crossing patrollers here. Given that, you know, we've represented the area for a long time and know the issues that come up with that school. In particular, the Downfield School outside St Cloud, outside how they in place, where school crossing patrollers have been going in the past, pack up their job because they kind of keep children safe because of the level of bad driving. You know, people that have went up on the the crossing patrol persons in the middle of the road and they're going up on the pavement to try to get past them when they're trying to see children across the road. The ROSPA, you know, measurements didn't attack and account the level of reports of bad driving that we receive as councillors. So, you know, I think we really need to put something into play there and perhaps at other schools. Or if we're thinking of removing crossing patrollers, we need to take that into account. You know, because people's children are going to be in danger of of there being a serious accident outside some of these schools. Just doing the people would like to get their kid directly into the the desk that they set while tattening their car there. And it's just no good enough. But, you know, that these these particular streets are that bad. Happy that if that we Daniel's agreement that you're stepping back for it, I think that's a good move. But we really need to put something in place that works for that area, because we ain't done anything up to now that does.
Yeah, no, thank you, Bella Keenan. Obviously, I think like all Saffron County councillors, we've all been out to Downfield Primary School and seen the issues out there. And indeed, through the safety, uh, partner safety group, a number of us have been out to a number of schools in the city and seen a lot of the issues that are out there. And actually, I think the safer streets and and the proposals that have come through the City Development Committee are really welcomed. And in fact, I think essentially supersede what the proposal was with the school cross patroller. So hopefully, once we see that implemented fully, and I think there's still that time, that process that that needs to go through, we'll see a significant improvement in the area. And obviously, as I've said to councillor Coleman, I'm more than happy to have this item brought back. If, once the safer streets is in place, we stop, if there's issues that hasn't been fixed, more than happy for that to come back. But at the moment, what we're suggesting is that we just hold off on this just now, allow the safer streets process to go through and do its work and review it once it's been implemented and see how how it's settled down. So with that, with councillor Coleman's agreement, hopefully the committee can agree to that, and then we'll see how that works. So is MD happy with that? I'm not seeing MDL saying anything else. So that's been agreed. Okay? And I think that's the last item on the agenda. Thank you, convenor. The next committee is the City Development Committee.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to City Development. Arlene, I think yours on tonight?
Yep, and thank you. Item one, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations?
I don't see any. Oh, sorry, here was one. Councillor Crichton, please.
Uh, yeah, I wish to declare that a close family member on item eleven is the author. And so it will not take place on voting or taking part.
All right, thank you very much for that. That is noted. Thank you. Anyone else? No, I think that's it. Arlene, can we move on, please?
Okay, thank you. Item two, West End Car Parks. This has been placed on the agenda at the request of councillor Coleman and Bailey McPherson.
I think it's councillor Crichton I've got in my notes.
Apologies. Yeah, sorry, sorry.
Councillor Coleman, yes, thank you for that. Councillor Crichton?
I can maybe just say, convenor, Michael and I have agreed that I will propose and he's going to second. So me rather than him. So apologies about that. It's just the order which has been put on the agenda. But um, with your indulgence, convenor, and and we do have, if you like, a joint motion, which I'd be very grateful if the officers would circulate. And and I'm not going to rehash the long discussions we've had over a great many years, in fact, and two iterations of consultation on a wider issue of a full residence parking scheme, which would have covered both on street and car parks. We, you know, we we lost that particular vote just over six months ago by a a very narrow margin. And I'm I'm not really, uh, uh, Michael wasn't actually a member of the council at that particular point. But we are not trying to resurrect that because we, you know, we we know, we know how that's going to go. This is a far less extensive proposal. And the 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 basic point is that what we're proposing is that in the seven west end car parks that have parking charges, we have something that is very, very similar to what already exists, for example, in Brody Ferry. We are in central Brody Ferry where there are car parks with charges. Those who live immediately adjacent to the car parks have the option, should they wish, to purchase a an annual permit from the council. And the 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 motion, as you can see, basically simply instructs officers to propose a draft scheme. And we would hope it would be very similar to what exists in 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 Brody Ferry. And no later than the thirty first of January next year, in order that any finalized and agreed parking scheme by this committee could be in place and time for the new financial year. And we we also allude to the fact that any, that any, it's impossible at this stage, impossible to work out if there's any net cost of a permit proposal to the council in relation to the current status quo, which really means that residents are in exactly the same boat as commuters and visitors in having to pay daily charges. But I just make this point, if a resident living next to a car park were to park each weekday of the year, they would be five hundred and twenty pounds per annum in order to park, which is pretty outrageous. And the the bottom line on this is that it'd be far fairer to at least give residents the option. If they, and I leave it to officers to determine the appropriate catchment area, if you like. You know, I've a lot of confidence in the officers in getting that right. And I did ask officers, because they they have done a, a, if you like, an estimated calculation as to the 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 possible net cost. Now, to be honest, that's a bit of a finger in the air because nobody really knows. But the cost would be fairly marginal because I think the take up would be not massive. I I think officers are are indicating they reckon something like seventy five permits would be taken up. I do have to say one very important thing, which I think was missing in the officer's calculation. And that is they are assuming that seventy five people buy a permit that are currently paying daily charges. And the reality on the ground is that because of the financial cost of doing that every day is so great for residents. Many residents are trying their luck parking on street. Now, there are a number of negatives in that. Point one, they, it's not very environmentally friendly. They drive round and round and round trying to find a parking space in an area that has some of the most challenging parking in the whole of the city. But secondly, it has spread the the on-street parking difficulties over a wider area and made it more difficult for everybody to park on street. And so, in short, we think this is quite a modest proposal. It simply is one of fairness, because if we can do this, frankly, for one area, which has exactly the same sort of situation of daily charges, and we can do it in another. So with that, I thank you, convenor, and I, as I say, councillor Crichton will second.
Okay, thank you, Billy McPherson. I'll just bring you now councillor Crichton, if that's okay.
Yeah, thank you, convenor. Just quickly, just reiterating what councillor McPherson just said, I'm more than happy to second him. And the issue for me is a simple one of fairness. And if we implement car parking charges in car parks and areas of significant residential housing, it's only right that you offer them a permit scheme. They do this in city centre and Brody Ferry. So really, in terms of just fairness and consistency, I do feel that we have a responsible responsibility. And that's why we propose it to the committee tonight. Thank you, convenor.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Nakla, I see you've got a question.
Yes, the question might be more for officers, just as a newly elected member to the ward that's been discussed. Just wondered if I could hear more about, I know a parking consultation was completed, and just what were the outcomes of that?
Mr McNorton, are you on on call tonight?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, convenor, and thank you for the question also. The so the consultation did span over the the pandemic period. So public events were initially held in the West End in March twenty twenty, which were well attended. And following on from that, officers also attended the West End Community Council meeting in June twenty twenty one. In addition to that, there was also a webpage set up for for comments and provide information. And information boards were also put up at the Blackness Library. And two interactive webinars were also held in November twenty twenty one. The consultation, as Bailey McPherson did allude to, was around the point of on-street residence parking rather than this particular motion of off-street residence parking permits. However, some views were expressed and recorded on a range of different issues. So we did receive in from the West End area forty responses to it. Again, there was a predominant sixty six percent opposition against the proposal. But that was the proposal for on-street residence parking rather than the the motion which has been discussed today. And again, there was a number of different points put across, concerns about permit fees and future increases. And also the complex interplay with a number of different aspects to do with public transport, national policy on restraint of vehicles. The university car parking, Amazon multiple occupancy, this went on. So there was, there's quite a lot of different views on it. There was nothing conclusive regarding the matter of off-street parking, which is included in the motion today. And again, that's partly due to that not having been the predominant reason for the consultation.
Okay, thank you for that, Yen. Does that answer your question, Odey?
Yeah, so from that, there was no recommendations.
Right, yeah.
Yud, can you just remind us what the period of time where the charges apply on these car parts are mentioned within the agenda here?
Yep, certainly. So the first two hours, so zero to two hours is free. It's also free overnight between five P M and nine A M, free at weekends. And the charges apply between over two hours, between two hours and four hours, it's one pound. Between four hours and eight hours or all day, it's a two pound fee.
Thanks very much for that. I think going back to Billy McPherson, I'll come back to say that I I minded not to go ahead with this proposal, as you would imagine, Billy McPherson. I think we've been through this on a number of occasions. Not that I don't discount some of the things you're saying. I don't think, we're trying to help the businesses here in health, Mr McNorton just touched upon there. We charge between nine o'clock and five o'clock, zero charge for the first two hours. I think that's quite clear. I think there's no need for everybody to park in these car parks. There's options available to park on street and various other parts of the the area if they choose to do that. We're not forcing everybody to park in the car parks and pay. And I think that's one of the misconceptions, what you've just said there, the fact that somebody would be paying for over five hundred pound a year. But that's a choice to park in the car park if they want to do that from nine o'clock to five o'clock. I don't see many people doing that, especially if they're working. They won't be back during five o'clock and they'll probably be away before nine o'clock. So there'll technically be no charge and the stuff of the parking facilities there for them if they chose to do that. So I minded not to do this and just move on. So I think, if anybody, can I get a second there, please? Yeah, thank you, councillor Rome. So we'll just go to a vote, if that's okay, Arlene? Oh, sorry, Billy McPherson, you can sum up. Sorry, my apologies for that.
That's very good of you, convenor. The point, I I I don't think your points are remotely valid, convenor. For a start, let me give you a very specific example. An elderly person who par, who who drives, lives in Roseangle, close to the Roseangle Car Park. They're retired, they are there during the day. And the 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 way it's sort of said, oh, well, there are other options. Have you tried parking in that area on street? It is a massive challenge, and I challenge any member of this committee to say that parking on street in the area around that particular car park is anything other than a real challenge. And the, I fail to see all the discussion, the relevance of all the discussion about on streaks. This has nothing to do with what's before us tonight. And what I don't think you touched on, convenor, is the very obvious thing. If we can provide it in one part of the city for car parking charges, why on earth can't we do it for this part of the city? And the people of the West End will draw their own conclusions as to the administration's stance on that. And the the bottom line on this is, it's inherently unfair to not have some form of residence parking permit scheme. Bear in mind that for the bulk of the time I've been a member of the council, there were no charges at these car parks. When I was convenor, there were no charges. You come along, all of a sudden, the SNP administration imposed these charges against the wishes of the people that live there. So as I say, very disappointed in the response of the administration, but the people of the West End will take note. Thank you, convenor.
I appreciate you, the representative of the West End, but we're here to support the businesses as well as the the residents. And as I said, we've actually put a price and it's not similar to what's happening in the ferry. Charges in the ferry are completely different and the off-street parking, there is off-street parking available. And I think that's the case where you're you're pulling in one or thinking to the other, and I don't support it at all. So I say I'll go forward with just going ahead and leaving it as a So I say I'll go forward with just going ahead and leaving it as a status quo. So I won't be agreeing to your proposal here tonight. Ewan, let me just probably go to the vote, please.
The motion by Bailey McPherson, seconded by councillor Creighton, is circulated. The amendment by the convener, seconded by councillor Rome, is the status quo and not to agree the motion. Convener.
Amendment.
Councillor Alexander.
Amendment.
Councillor Anderson.
Amendment.
Lord Provost.
Amendment.
Deputy Lord Provost.
Amendment.
Bailey Dawson.
The amendment.
Councillor El Nakla.
Amendment.
Councillor Hunter.
Amendment.
Councillor Lynn.
Amendment.
Bailey Roberts.
Amendment.
Councillor Rome.
Amendment.
Bailey Sawyers.
Amendment.
Councillor Short.
Amendment.
Councillor Smith.
Amendment.
Councillor Tolland.
Yeah, amendment.
Bailey Keenan.
Motion.
Councillor Croke Shank.
Motion.
Councillor Finnegan.
Motion.
Councillor McEwan.
Motion.
Councillor McIrvin.
Motion.
Councillor Malone.
The motion.
Councillor Shears.
Motion.
Bailey Wright.
Motion.
Bailey McPherson.
The motion.
Councillor Coleman.
Motion.
Councillor Creighton.
The motion.
Councillor Duncan. Bailey Scott.
Motion.
So that's thirteen for the motion and fifteen for the amendment, so the amendment is carried.
Thank you, Ollie. Can we just move on to item three, please?
Item three, school streets, part-time prohibition of driving. This is for approval.
This item seeks approval for the promotion of the part-time prohibition of driving order in vicinity of five of our primary schools during start and finish times. And the report provides an update on the school streets delivery programme from further primary school locations with school streets may be proposed in future implementations. Now, a number of questions here. Councillor Hunter, I think you were first, please.
Yeah, I don't have a question, I've just got a comment to make. Personally, I apologise for calling this the completely wrong thing on my committee. I'm just, I'm going to blame the distraction of my dog, I'll just be honest. But I really just want to make a quick comment on this and welcome this, you know, as we touched on on the previous committee. There's been a lot of issues in our schools for a number of years now regarding driving and round about the schools at the start of school and the end of school. And I really welcome these proposals to try and do something to try and fix this. And I think if we have any doubts, we should just look at what happened last week at one of our schools to see how serious this issue is. And we've been, you know, that situation could have been a lot worse. We need to be extremely grateful. I think those of us who have been on the school parking group for the last ten years and have often been out to our schools or looked at issues at the schools that are mentioned on this item and other schools around the city. I think we've often been shocked by some of the things that we've seen around the schools by drivers and particularly parents who are far more keen to get their kids dropped off as close to the school as actually looking at how safely they're doing that. And, you know, some of the things we've seen, and it's been well documented on previous committees down the years about how bad it is. So I welcome anything that we try and do to make it safe for our young people to get to school and hopefully won't see incidents like what we saw last week occur in the future. So just to put that on record and thank you for the officers for the work that they've done to bring these forward. And hopefully we'll start to see a difference around our schools, particularly for our young people.
Yeah, thanks, councillor Hunter. That's absolutely excellent comments and I totally stand by what you're saying as well. And I think taking in fact what Bailey Keenan touched upon in the last committee with yourself, with the seriousness around some of the entrances to the schools. It's really important we actually continue to progress with these, working with the police, of course, because the police have got to enforce that, not the council. And I think that's the most important part of this. And also working with the school parking group, I think the input is very much welcome. So thank you very much for that. Councillor Duncan, have a question.
Yeah, thanks, convener. I mean firstly, just to concur with a lot of what councillor Hunter's just said there, that, you know, anything that can enhance pupil safety the way is to be welcomed. And like him, I've seen sadly, you know, some absolutely shocking examples of driver behaviour among the schools in my ward. And so anyway, I mean, I'm glad to see that, you know, this measure that's, you know, coming forward for Easton Primary School and also Baden Hill Primary is mentioned for future consideration. The couple of questions I've got, we, I think I know the answers, but rather than trust my failing memory, I'd rather ask officers. So obviously, there is already in Church Street outside Easton Primary, the yellow zigzags. So just for the, just to be very, very clear, this part-time prohibition is not instead of, but in addition to, so that's point one. Point two is, who enforces each of the measures? I have a notion, but I'd like confirmation that the police do the part-time prohibition, but parking enforcement do the yellow zigzags and other yellow markings around. But I just like clarity on that.
No, I think you've touched on a very important point. I think the reason we've done this actually is to put the school streets in, is to take this ambiguity, I'll bring Mr McNorton in a second, was to take that ambiguity out of the whole process, whether it be an enforcement officer with regards to the council, whether it be a police with a moving traffic offence. But I think that's the important part of bringing the school streets in. But I'll bring in you and just to add to that, make comment.
Yeah, thank you, convener. The councillor Duncan's correct, the zigzags are enforced by Dundee City Council's parking team. Again, there are, there's some complications around the actual practicality enforcing zigzag markings. The proposal is for a driving prohibition order, so that's Police Scotland enforced order. And as you mentioned, convener, it's a very clearer enforceable violation. So anyone who's driving within the zone, similar to a no-entry or prohibition of turn movement, it's a traffic offence. And the Police Scotland can enforce that.
As your question, councillor Duncan?
Yeah, no, I'm really obliged for the qualification because I'm sure that not just myself, but all elected members over the years have had lots of issues, you know, around poor, poor driving behaviour, shall we say, in schools. So anything that tightens down and qualifies it is good.
I think what a massive reduction in considered driving by many, then the challenges would be a lot less than what we're actually having to be up with at the moment. So it's something to highlight to parents and carers and anybody else who's dropping off children in school. So thanks very much for that. Councillor Finnegan, I see you have a question.
Hiya, thanks. It was just regarding the school streets. It said in four point nine, Fintree Primary has seen a five percent positive model of children getting to school, but five percent of what, what was the baseline? It's self-reported. So is it the full journey that they've stopped taking the car? I've heard residents and schoolchildren and parents speak to me, they think it's a great idea. Their concern is it's not enforced at all, the traffic's just displaced to the streets beyond the kind of cordon. And I'm happy to know that the school crossing patrolers in the last committee are not moving. So it's just a wee bit about numbers, how many cars are going to be shifted, displaced? How many people are then going to actually walk to school and things? Because also Long Hall and St Francis in the North East, which is programmed, I think the plan is to shut off Lothian Crescent. But if anybody goes up Long Hall Road now, the buses are, the traffic is terrible. So if all those people move to Thirnham Terrace, and we just, we just move in the traffic, is what I am concerned about. Where there's nobody overseeing children crossing the road or what actually determine parents from driving to the school. Sorry, that's a bit of jumbled, but I think you might get my gist.
Yeah, I get your gist of that. I think the whole process here is to try and encourage people to walk and scoot a bit more and maybe take their bikes and encourage that type of act of travel. And encourage the parents not to drive and not to take their vehicles to the schools themselves and allow the children to access the schools in a safer manner. I think that's ultimately what we're aiming for. But I'll bring in Mr McNorton to possibly answer the question with regards to the Fintree Primary School directly, sorry. Ian?
Yeah, thanks very much, convener. The, in terms of the five percent modal shift that was experienced at the Fintree Primary School following inception, we measure that off what we call the annual hands-up survey. So it's the before and after survey and it's a self-reporting survey, as you say. So there's, the traffic's moved in two areas effectively, one's displacement and the other one's evaporation, traffic evaporation. So the five percent represents the traffic evaporation. So that's journeys that have directly moved, so lowered on people being driven to school and then the corresponding increase on active travel. So it gives you a sense of cooperation on those figures as well. The five percent may seem small, but in terms of interventions, it's massive. It's, you know, you don't achieve change like that through soft-nudge behavioural change, you know, education, promotion, marketing, these types of things. So it is a significant modal shift in terms of any travel habits and particularly at schools as well. The displacement does represent the bulk of vehicles, so traffic's still going to school. It's just it's displaced from the area. And that more comes into the realms of where is it preferable to have the traffic? Because there's good reasons why a number of people do need to travel by car to drop and collect children off. There's grandparents issues, there's lifestyle habits, work and so forth. So we recognise and accept that some of these community streets are very congested and this can lead to some of the poor driving behaviour, the three-point turns, all these type of manoeuvres. So again, it's whether or not it's best having it in the tight, congested, five-and-a-half-metre-wide residential streets around the schools or further spread out over a wider area.
Yeah, thank you. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay, thank, thanks for that. Councillor Coleman?
Thank you, Mr convener. And thankfully, I echo comments, but I'm glad about the progress we're making here in terms of safety. Anything that improves particular children's safety is only to be welcomed. I'm very, you know, downfield, as we've discussed, in St Andrews will be implemented in this academic year, an assisted assistance programme. Just wonder if officers have any specific dates of this academic year. And I also welcome in future phases, we have Adler and Kegel, but I just would like to ask how we determine which streets. In terms of Kegel, Laird Street is the main road that runs past that. I wouldn't have thought we would include something like Laird Street, maybe we will. But what process do we go through to determine what roads we select when we're implementing safer streets?
Yeah, I'll pass on straight over to Mr McNorton to answer the process there.
Yeah, thanks very much, councillor Coleman. Thank you, convener. The, so it is programmed in for this financial year and the initial target at the moment, and we've got some further correspondence to do with stakeholders, but January's what we're targeting, but it'll certainly be in by the end of the financial year. The, in terms of the process, it's a discussion which is held with the head teachers of the first port and also the parent councils and other stakeholders as well, depending on the circumstances, which can involve bus operators, the Police Scotland and so forth as well. So that shapes where the proposal is. Generally, it's taken as a pragmatic view to where the zone extent should be. Again, it's considering displacement appropriateness and that number of other factors as well.
Okay, thank you for that. Does that answer your question, councillor Coleman?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Bailey Scott, next.
Thanks, convener. I'm supportive of these measures and particularly the ones that relate to the schools and the one I represent. Over the years, we've tried umpteen different measures to try and deal with the problem of traffic around the schools and dropping off and picking up time. And, you know, sometimes you just about get there and then a new cohort of pupils and parents come along and we have to start all over again. So I think this innovative way of dealing with it has to be supported. I had a similar question as Jack's had regarding the displacement, because it's always, always a concern about the displacement. So I take it that displacement will be monitored going forward and if there is an issue, that will be addressed and a report will come back as to how that will be actioned. And I also have a question, please, about paragraph four point five, which says that parked vehicles during these periods will not be affected by a prohibition of driving regulations. I take it that's because they are static, but if they were to become mobile during that prohibition period, that they would be in breach of the prohibition.
Yeah, I would say you're right for the second point and I'll bring in you and just to sort of answer your questions in more detail.
Yep, thank you, convener. Correct and correct. The displacement will be monitored and we will report back if there's any further changes needed for mitigation measures. And regarding paragraph four point five, yeah, static vehicles, if you park before the period and the vehicle's parked, there's no violation. So it's a moving vehicle offence effectively, so as long as the vehicle's not moving within the period, it's not an offence.
Bailey Scott also touched on a very good point there, Ian, with regards to the new intake in primary ones and possibly the travel plans not getting out to the parents in time or whatever, can you maybe just to give us a reassurance that that will be done in plenty of time to make sure they are aware of this type of thing?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll give that commitment, convener. We've got officers working consultation with the school and other groups as well. So we'll do full advertising and liaison engagement for that.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you very much. You want to come back on that, Derek? Okay, thanks for that. Councillor Rome, please.
Hi, convener. And just a very quick point, and just firstly, as I say, I'm really pleased with the collective agreement and support committee for this issue. It's really good that we can agree this without any politics in it because it's such an important issue. I share councillor Finnegan's concerns about policing in the area and I've spoken to the area commander, Ross Fitzgerald, about the need for having policing in the area. And I think we need to recognise that there is limited resource for policing. But at the same time, the most effective policing will be random policing because people will get complacent about if they've seen a police car there two days, three days in a row. So I think that is an issue, but I think we've got a good working model going forward, having gone through this pilot. And I'm really pleased to see us moving forward with all of us, really. I had another point which has entirely escaped me, but I suppose I may be just finished by saying, you know, very happy with this measure. I'm very glad to see the new schools are in it. And this isn't a panacea by any means. This isn't a magic wand that's going to fix it. We need to really change driver behaviour. And I think what this does going forward with having the different tranches of schools in it is keeps that focus on the issue and shines a light on it. And I think that's what we need to continue to do. As Bailey Scott said, you know, this is something that can fade out and fade back in. But I think as long as we're continuing this and keeping the focus on it, it'll lead to better behaviour for drivers in and around schools.
No, thanks very much for that. I absolutely agree with you. The fact that everyone gets involved with this, whether it be the families, the children themselves. And I think we were up at Fintree Primary School last week, noting that the children took part within drawing a poster for themselves to try and remind people with cars not to bring their cars into the area. So just goes to show they're all getting involved. Councillor Short, please.
Thank you, convener. Clippington Road, displacement, there's a big massive car park in Dura Street. Clippington Road, there's a police station next door to it, yet still it is one that is being looked at. And so it does kind of ask that question, really, ultimately, we need to look at that nudge behaviour. We need to look at reeducating our parents. I'm not going to sit here and say that I wasn't that parent. I lived in three different addresses when my son was at primary school and two of those three I had to drive on. I did try driving Locky Park and walk over to Antrim Road, but it wasn't always easy because when you're running around as a parent, it is difficult. But what I do remember at the time was they would have specific weeks when they would focus on walking to school or taking your bike to school. And that was even before days of active travel and how popular it is now. So my question is, will the schools that are coming through have the ability to talk to parents and the young people about the ways to get to school without a car? And also, will there be talks about the fact that environmentally and due to air quality, it'll be better for the children if there's not cars there? And secondly, environmentally for the planet? And we talk about twenty-minute neighbourhoods. One of my neighbours, his children go to Clippington Road and I see them walking every morning. So how do we encourage and get the young people to basically do that nudge with their parents?
No, thanks for that. I think you raise a very good point in regards to the children's health and their quality around schools with the congestion, traffic and so on. Some of our schools, especially in your ward, and clearly, Mr McNorton, again, we touched on travel plans here again, Ollie.
Yeah, I mean, it's, excuse me, it's a very good point. It's, this is only one part of the jigsaw, as others have mentioned. And again, we have got resource from a number of departments going to schools to talk to pupils and in conjunction with the teachers who also do this about a variety of active travel and lifestyle habit, behaviour change. lifestyle habit, behaviour change type things. This is only part of that piece and we'll follow through with through bikeability training and other measures as well to really implant in that message as a cultural behaviour change, not just a single intervention.
Yeah, thanks. And you'll come back, Councillor Short? You're on mute.
Yeah, it's, it's just really good to hear because obviously at the end of the street, which will probably be the catchment for Clippington, we have over two hundred houses going up. So it'd be really good to foster that good behaviour before the families have even gone in to into these properties. So I think it'll probably be much easier to walk down once the changes have been made in the roads in that that area. But it would be good if the the schools department would work on that as well.
I'm sure they will. Thank you very much for that. Councillor Shears, please.
Cheers. Just a quick one. I'm trying to preempt questions I'll get from constituents about this. Just on paragraph four point four about the permits. How are the permits going to be issued? Will it be a database of licence plates, an actual physical permit that they'd have to keep in the car at all times? How would that work and how would that be enforced?
Again, I'll bring Mr. McNaughton to give you the right details here, rather than me telling you.
Yeah, so we've, there's a range of different ways people can apply for permits, either in person or by email. Emails are preferred for ourselves, but we will accommodate requests from a number of different ways. So they're annual permits, they're free of issue and it's a paper permit which is to be displayed in the, in the vehicle when driving, only when, when people are driving within these times. So it's fairly straightforward process, very similar to most of our other permits as well that we have for a variety of other things. And again, we've got details on the website as well. We've got a website set up for the school streets on the Dundee City Council webpage, which has got further details on the permits as well.
Okay, thanks. That answers your question, Pete?
Yep, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much for that. And thanks everybody in the committee for the positive support with this process. I think this policy is really important and children's safety is primarily what we're doing it for. So thanks very much for that. So I'll take that as agreed. Thank you. Next one, Ali, please.
Item four, secure on-street residential cycle parking. This is for approval.
Again, this item seeks to approve the new residential cycle storage scheme. We've got adequate cycle stores identified, really as a barrier for bike ownership in high density residential areas. And the scheme's aims is to address this and support the uptake of cycling. It features an introduction of forty secure units and locations to be identified in conjunction with the commission supplier. And we'll be featuring a consultation with community groups, et cetera, and members will be on locations to be identified. I see a lot of questions coming here. So Bailey, first, and I think you were first there.
Thanks, Convena. You're slightly touched on. I'm just seeking an assurance from officers in relation to two one B. Obviously, given delegated authorities to the head of sustainable transport and roads to to press on subject to agreement tonight, and I'm sure everybody will see the positive benefit of this proposal. It's just really an assurance from officers that when specific sites are determined that there is some engagement with the local elected members on that, who obviously have a great deal of local knowledge. But I'm just really seeking an assurance that, you know, officers will come back to the local members when we reach that stage.
Yeah, thanks, Bailey McPherson. I'm sure that would certainly be the case once the locations are selected, but I'll just get Mr. McNaughton just to confirm.
Yeah, thank you, Convena. That's, that's correct. It is noted in the committee report that once we've come up with a proposal for the identify sites, we'll liaise with elected members, other stakeholders and also community groups as well on the, the locations before we proceed.
That's reassuring. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Bailey Keenan, please.
Cheers. I'm pleased about the fact that you're going to consult widely on the placement of these. But my question's around the security of these and, you know, it's a big play on secure on-street residence cycle parking and a charge for it. And, you know, if you lost the key, we'll take twenty five quid on you for a new one. But are we offering any kind of insurance that we will look after their goods or does everyone leave their goods or bike there at their own risk, given that some of these electric bikes are, you know, the best bet of a couple of thousand pounds? So, you know, are we looking to do something regarding any sort of vandal attack that might happen? Or is it a case of, yep, it's secure, but you leave it at your end risk?
Yes, the question is, is this the annual, sorry, the monthly fee covering insurance? Is that kind of what you're asking?
Yeah, if there's something built in.
Yeah. Mr. McNaughton?
Yeah, thank you, Convena. Thank you for the question, Bailey Keenan. Insurance isn't included. And again, it follows similar measures with car parking and so forth as well. They are secure units as secure as you can get. Nothing's foolproof, but again, it's, it doesn't indemnify for insurance purposes. And there's, there's a number of reasons for that, particularly around the ownership of the bikes as well.
I think we'll make that perfectly clear in any kind of lease agreement or with people as well, so that there's no ambiguity.
Yep.
Thank you. I assume I have to make sure that personal insurance and home insurance would have to be notified as well if that was the case. So I'm sure that would be part of the agreement. Okay, thank you very much for that. Bailey Scott, I see you next.
Thanks, Convena. My questions have been dealt with, although I have another one that was about this, how secure the, it is, and that's been answered. And I also had a concern as well about making sure that local members and community groups are consulted before the final location was taken up. Because quite often in the past, when street furniture has been put up in certain locations, been an avalanche of complaints about it, which all could have been avoided if there'd just been a discussion about it in the first place. I have a question please, though, about the the non-contract allowances of sixty thousand pounds. That's quite a big percentage of the overall contract and it's quite higher percentage than we usually see in contracts coming forward. I know part of that allowance will include things such as the mind aligning works that might be required if they're going on to the, on to the road and also for any planning permissions that might be required if it's going in a conservation area. But I just wondered what else is included in that large percentage of non-contract allowances?
Okay, thank you for that. Mr. McNaughton?
Yeah, thank you, Convena. The, the non-contract allowances is predominantly to do with groundwork. So if we're putting them in on slabbed footpaths, doing the foundations and reinstatements and similar for potentially having to do drainage adjustments or build outs to car parking base to move them from road to footway, these type of things. So again, because we haven't identified the locations where the forty units are going to go in yet, it's, it's, it's an ample allowance, if you like, that we've included in there, just to the unforeseen, but it's based on groundwork predominantly.
Okay, thank you. Go, Scott.
That's fine. Thank you. So hopefully we'll see an underspend getting reported to the Policy Resources Committee next year.
Okay, I'll look forward to that one. Councillor Shears, please.
Cheers. I'm just looking for a bit of clarification on three point two A and three point three A. And three point two A says that six pound per space will be charged to users to cover management, maintenance and administration costs. And three point three A says that Dundee City Council will be responsible for any accident or deliberate damage. Can we just confirm that Dundee City Council is only responsible after the ten year warranty? And then if that is the case, after the ten year warranty is gone and cycle hoop are no longer responsible for the maintenance and management, does any of the six pound per space come back into the council? Or does cycle hoop continue charging that to users without offering any kind of maintenance?
Mr. McNaughton?
Yeah, thank you for the question, Councillor Shears. It's the the six pound a month. If we base it on what we're hoping to achieve of about a ninety two percent utilisation, it comes in at around about fifteen thousand per annum. If we've got, you know, ninety two percent occupancy of forty units throughout the city. And again, as noted, there's quite a range of different activities which we're asking the supplier to undertake for us, including taking all the inquiries and doing future demand assessments and such like as well. The, in terms of the damage, it really comes down to what's insurable damage, what's maintenance damage. The contracts for a, an initial five year term, we've got option to extend that afterwards. But if it's vandalism damage out with insurance, then the council will be liable for that and that is a revenue burden.
Okay, Councillor Shears? Answer your question?
Yeah, question answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Short, please.
Thank you. Couldn't let this come and not say thank you to Mr. McNaughton because I've been banging on about this for, I don't know, as long as he's been in post for sure, if not even before that. There's no way I'm hunking a bike up my stairs and then having it in my hallway. And so hopefully this will start to be the same for lots of people across the city. And can we, can we make sure that we continue to sell the, the fact that we only have is it fifty four percent of the people in the city that have access to a car? And therefore, if we have places where bikes are, and it means that there's different alternatives for people. And again, it's about climate change because if you're on your bike and you can go from my house to Albert Street to go to Lidl, then it's going to be a lot easier than jumping in a taxi. So it's, it's not just about bikes, it's about the way that the city works and the way that the climate change is impacted as well, because why should we be jumping in the car for these very quick routes? And we should be going in different alternative ways. So, I don't know. I've seen some of the, the cycle storage. So are we going to be making sure that they're very much? I know with lots, lots of street art around, will we show that this is about the planet? And as well as actually just getting people on bikes, because I think sometimes the message is not quite there.
I think the message of travel is quite clear and I'm sure we'll get that message across. We'll keep pondering the way to it. But you any comment on the, the cycle hoop units if it's approved?
Yeah, certainly. It's, again, it's, you're very much right. It's another one of these. It's a piece of the jigsaw. We've got another, we've got a number of other interventions which run parallel with this all to try and boost and market and improve cycling, some of which will be on the committee agenda later on. It is in the interest for the supplier to make this work. So again, there'll be, there'll be assistance in our promotion of it as well. We've gone in quite ambitiously. We've got more units per head of population than Edinburgh and Glasgow proposed in with this initial first release. And again, if the demand comes in either by telephone or email to cycle hoop through their website and the demands present will expand the offering as well. We've got provision within the contract to do that. So it is forty units, which is, as I say, per head of population, quite a large order for Dundee. However, it could grow as well if the demands, which we hope it will be, we hope it will grow as well.
Okay, thank you for that. Absolutely. That's my wish as well.
I have a supplementary, Convena, if that's possible, please.
I was about to ask.
All right, sorry.
Do you want to come back on that?
I'm ready, if that's okay. And can I just ask you, would it be possible if we can somehow gauge people who perhaps didn't have a bike but buy a bike or get access to a bike because that we have shelters in place? So are, are to see if it's somebody who is then kind of having that displacement from their hallway and not having to carry up the stairs? So we, we get an idea of what these are actually doing to the face of the city as well? Please.
Yeah, I think that'd be quite easy. Mr. McNaughton, I think that's quite a sensible approach.
Yeah, certainly. I'll, I'll ask the supplier about feedback surveys, both on the, the initials and also periodic as well on how the customers are feeding back on this.
Okay, thank you. Finished now. Councillor McQ, please.
Thank you. I'm generally supportive of this proposal, but have one or two questions on the integrated impact assessment, which is on page twenty nine. The responses in every section are identical. And that doesn't suggest to me that each impact has been properly considered. The integrated impact assessments were reviewed and updated to reflect a more stringent evaluation of how policies and proposals affected different groups. And has this actually been done here? All impacts may be positive, but what assurance can be given that, that these impacts have been carefully and individually considered? Because what we have in this integrated impact assessment is a cut and paste of, of the same paragraph under every heading.
Ewan, would you like to come back on that?
Yeah, certainly. Thank you, Convena, and thank you for the question, Councillor McQ. I think it's fair to say that the new IIA, Integrated Impact Assessment Process, some of our officers are still getting used to the process. This one in particular, we did have a bit of a question mark on whether or not it really was appropriate for an IIA, particularly when, you know, generally cycling is good. I don't think there's any detriments really to anybody from cycling. Active travel is fairly widely considered to be a positive throughout. You know, firstly, the applicability to this and then also from a formatting point of view, which you're right to identify, we do still have some improvements to make on that point.
Okay, Councillor McQ, you want to come back, do you?
Yes, that's fine. But whether, whether you, you, you think a proposal has just positive impact or not, we'd still need to go through the integrated impact assessment if it's a policy or a change to services. So it just, it just seems to me it hasn't really been very carefully looked at. And I appreciate that the new integrated impact assessment is new and there's maybe a wee learning curve there. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for that. And I think they've taken on board from the conveners meeting as well with regards to impact assessments and what needs to be done with them as well. So Councillor Lynn, last question, please.
Yeah, it's a, a, just a brief practical question. I think this is a great thing. I used to cycle everywhere when I, I lived in London. I was a lot healthier in those days and who, who knows, maybe I'll, I'll take it up again. But yeah, my question is just about the, the security of the hangars. Do they, do they, do they, I don't know why. I noticed Jack's laughing at me. I don't know why. She's making me laugh now. But yeah, the question, are they, do they, do they close automatically or will it be possible for someone to, to neglect to, to properly lock the hangar once they've removed their bike or indeed after they've, they've put a bike in there?
Practicalities, I'll leave them, Mr. McNaughton, here.
Yeah, thank you, Convena. My understanding is they, they do lock a hydraulic system and then it'll be quite evident that they're not locked. But we certainly provide you some more details on the actual units if you, if you'd like. But my understanding from the feedback that we have from Glasgow and Edinburgh is they've not experienced a lot of problems in terms of users. There's also, I should have said, part of the commissions, as noted within the report, is that cycle hoopers, the commissioner will undertake acts and assistance with how to use the units, how to lock them, where to report to and all these types of things. There's a bit of guidance given to users as well when they, when they do have them. But I believe it's a fairly straightforward type of shelter, which isn't too complicated for users.
Okay, great stuff. Thanks.
No, thanks. Thanks for all the questions. I think it's very much shows the eagerness of everybody to get cycle storage and promote cycling within the city, especially in the residential areas with tenemental sections. So thanks very much for that. I'll take this as agreed. I mean, that's it. Agreed. Thank you very much. Next, Ali, please.
Item five, pedestrian crossing assessment process. This is for approval.
Yeah, this item seeks approval to introduce a new process for the assessment of pedestrian crossing requirements. Proposal process applies weighting assessments categorized into locations featuring a high proportion of vulnerable pedestrians crossing the road, levels of HGV traffic on the road and accident rates. Previous historic pedestrian crossing assessments will be reevaluated based on the new assessment process and sites assessed under the new criteria. First question is Councillor Crichton, please.
Thank you, Convena. Yeah, Bailey McPherson and myself have long argued for the need for a crossing on Riverside Approach in relation to Roseangle Car Park. And given the new criteria takes better into account your groups such as children, will this improve the likelihood of sites like these meeting the new criteria and being provided for? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McNaughton, again, it's got to be assessed, I'm assuming.
Yeah, thank you, Convena. It's, it does have to be assessed and we will report back on that particular location. What I would say is in regard to that location and other locations as well, with similar circumstances, i.e. a plate park on the other side of the road, this criteria will increase the scoring, the weighting factor for these types of locations because of the demographics that are in the area and using the, the crossing points of the road.
Okay, thanks. Does that answer your question, Councillor Crichton?
It does. Thank you, Convena.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Rome, please.
Hi, thank you, Convena. It's a question for Mr. McNaughton. Obviously, the point of this new formula is to give greater weighting to, to certain groups to make sure that certain crossings are commissioned as opposed to certain crossings are commissioned as opposed to uh the current state is quo. Just to ask you, what commit uh what assurances committee can have about whether this will be reviewed? Uh if it doesn't lead to significant change in the number of crossings that are um approved?
You?
Yep, thank you, convenor. Um I can confirm as mentioned in the report that um we will undertake that review of all the historic assessment um sites and we'll report that back in the annual road safety report. When we do report it back in the annual road safety report, we will note how many new pedestrian crossings there are that have resulted from the new intervention criteria. And if it's not achieving the magnitude of change that we're looking for, we will bring back recommendations in the annual road safety report for um change to the intervention levels um to get the results that we're looking for.
Yeah, thanks very much for that. I'm much appreciated. With that answer, I'm sure councillor Rome would agree. I think that gives us the committee the opportunity to review as the annual report comes in next September, I think, from memory.
I'm happy with that assurance.
Okay, thank you. Uh Billy Scott, please.
I'm really pleased to see this report, convenor. I can't tell you the number of times over the years I've been frustrated by that PV two ratio. And no matter how often I go back to office and say, ah, but what about? And that's not being taken into account. And so thank goodness we're not having that weighting factor. So all these things I've mentioned over the years can all now be included in the calculation. Um but uh uh there will be quite a number of previously requested sites that will now meet that new criteria. So as not to build up expectations from people, can you tell us how many um crossings have been provided in the past year? And will additional funding be provided in the next financial year to help and provide more crossings that meet the new criteria?
Oh, thanks for your support. I think we actually welcome the change as well. I think it's important we actually take in the vulnerable users, et cetera, that's been added in here in this width of roads, et cetera. And I think it's really important to actually do that historic part within the report to make sure we can actually review the ones like councillor Crichton mentioned and yourself. But I'll bring Mr McNamara in to give a bit more background.
Yeah, thank you, convenor. Um regarding to the number, we've been doing about one or two um per year. The um the investments, particularly Scottish government um investment in um active travel has been increasing and we've got larger budgets now than we've ever had um in the past for doing uh active travel interventions like pedestrian crossings um at the current time. The um the there was another part to your your question, forgive me. It was um to do with the the expectations for um for for pedestrian crossings. So we will report back on um the new ones that we are going to be taking forward within the the road safety programme. Um and again, uh we've we've got opportunity to accommodate those in there.
Billy Scott?
Well, that that's great, convenor. I don't want to be in a position where I go back to residents who have asked me for a crossing or a school has asked me for a crossing or a a a sheltered um tenants association has asked me for a crossing and I go back to them and say, yes, it meets the the new criteria, so one will go in, but it might be twelve years before you see it. I think we need to be able to um br- bring these forward in a reasonable length of time.
Absolutely agree with you. And I think it's the importance of having the new sort of policy, the new process in place as we actually look to do that and look to actually review it. And I think that's the important part. It was touched upon by Mr McNamara to councillor Rome's response that it's not just going to sit there at the the level one if there's no crossings, for example, uh getting put in. I think that's something for committee to review and then do that at that particular time. And I think funding from Scottish government, as Mr McNamara has touched upon, is on increase for sustainable transport and pedestrians, et cetera. So I think in active travel, so I think we'll be making sure we actually have a bit of the applications in. And we do cycle and walk or save for streets contribution on an annual basis. I think we're looking for more coming forward as well. So I think that's what we'll always be looking for more money to do as much as we can in the city. Thank you very much for that. Uh Billy McPherson, please.
Uh thanks indeed, convenor, and I'm grateful about the reassurance in relation to um keeping this under review uh to ensure that we actually get the desired impact. Um councillor Crichton mentioned um the situation in Roseangle. In fact, one of my other old favourites in terms of raising repeatedly is is in appendix one. And that's the the Blackness Road at the Castle steps where a large number of Harris pupils and um some people from Blackness Primary School um cross. Now, I noticed from what's on appendix one that what was a PV two score score of oh point one nine two moves to a new assessment value of zero point two nine five. The proof of the pudding is, you know, that that, well, I suppose for me, what was apparent from appendix one was, well, they've all gone up. Does that actually result in anything that actually gives us what we're looking for, which is a higher number? So the reassurance on that is helpful. What I was really wondering though was, um we're remitting uh the the head of sustainable transport and roads to reevaluate historical pedestrian assessments, and that's very helpful. Can I just ask that where we've raised particular ones, uh we will as as local members be advised of what the likely impacts of that reassessment will be at the ones that we specifically raised, as I say, Castle Street and Roseangle being ones that are particularly dear to the heart of councillor Crichton and myself?
Yep, Mr McNamara.
Yeah, thank you, convenor. Can confirm that we'll report that back in the annual road safety report um with with details of both the uh the the changes of all the reevaluated schemes.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
Uh councillor Short, please.
Thank you, convenor. Sorry, I'm struggling there a wee bit. And so again, I'm going to go back to the fact that the world has changed quite a bit in the last two years. Uh we have got an aging population and we also have um a population that's more keen to explore our um green spaces uh and our parks and all the wonderful uh nature has to offer in the city. So um is that something that will be uh taken into account? And that, again, that whole twenty minute neighbourhood, making it easy for people to go from the the areas of high population and high density population of a specific type to those um twenty minute areas that will service them, please?
Yeah, I think destination is one of the criteria. Well, you can come back.
Right, yeah. Uh thank you, convenor. It's um trip ends destinations um for the connectivity with shops, community, education, leisure and so forth. Um that is one of the the criteria.
Yeah, thanks for that and the reassurance. Thank you. I see any more questions, so we can take this as agreed. Thank you very much. Can we move on? Arlene, please.
Item six, city centre strategic investment plan. This is for approval.
Again, this report seeks approval of the city centre strategic investment plan. The plan sets out an ambitious thirty year vision to transform the city centre. Plans based around the themes of living, working, visiting, connectivity in public realm with short, medium and longer term actions to support delivery. The importance of place making and responding to the climate emergency are at the heart of this development of the plan. It's not a plan that the council can deliver on its own. It'll stimulate and we hope it will stimulate public uh private sector investment and demonstrate the council's long term commitment. Change won't happen overnight and we'll need to respond to challenges and opportunity as chop opportunities arise. The report also identifies a range of projects and other interventions. But it will kickstart delivery of the plans, objectives and approvals sought to allocate and pursue funding to deliver these. I see Billy McPherson, please.
Uh thanks very much, convenor. Can I firstly say, uh this is one of the best reports I've seen in a long time in terms of frankly, a long term vision. Uh I I and and um I'm, you know, I congratulate the officers and thank them for the work that they've put into this because I think this is extremely positive. It'll not all land like from space by uh some miracle. It will be a lot of hard work. And as you correctly allude to, convenor, a lot of um partnership working with the private sector um to um achieve where we would like to be with the city centre. But we'll have to be frankly dynamic about this. And city centres, not just our own, right around the country and indeed the world are changing. The world is changing in relation to how we use and view um um city centres. And you do have to be proactive and dynamic about it. So I'm I'm grateful to the officers for that. I'm also grateful for the briefing last week, which I thought was um uh uh very helpful. It's something that I raised at the briefing, but I think it'd be of benefit to um the uh the whole committee if, I don't know, we just touched on this and officers could give us some reassurance. And it's really in relation to future housing and and the the principle of trying to achieve more people living in um the 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 city centre. And the reason I raise it is really in relation to where we're not, in a way, with site two at the waterfront, where there was, as you'll uh as you and other members of the committee will be aware, there was a a a hope that a hundred and seventeen, if you like, start up apartments for young graduates and others uh would be achieved in the previous um uh proposal, which really hasn't come come off. And I suppose what I'm really looking for, uh just for the benefit of the committee, is an assurance from officers that they're confident that a higher level of residential housing will actually have a demand for it, that there are actually, um you know, just before we we embark on uh 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 that that the experience that we've had with waterfront site two will not lead to um uh future development, which doesn't really happen because the demand isn't there.
Yeah, thanks for that. Before I go to the officers, I'd like to agree with your comments about the the report itself and the actual plan. I think it's really an ambitious plan. It's it's getting that thought into people's minds of what could happen in the city. You're right, it won't all necessarily happen. But unless we start that conversation, it's really not going to go anywhere until that conversation started and that strategic plan going forward. And I think that's the whole point of this report. Again, after, if it's approved this evening, then stakeholders will be sort of contacted and communicated with from that from tomorrow onwards. But I'll bring in Mr Presswood to address the your main points.
Convenor. Convenor, many thanks for that. And thank you to the members for the the kind words, which Gregor and I will be sure to pass on to the the whole team from throughout service that have been working on this. And in terms of the specific point that Bailey McPherson raises uh about the need for private rented sector accommodation, we absolutely share that view. And I do not believe that the experience of having reviewed options, which we weren't ultimately able to bring forward, means that there isn't demand for PRS. I I I think the substantial challenge sat around valuations for this. And and surveyors frankly were looking at the Dundee market as a whole and saying, well, actually, average rentals are beneath the threshold that you would need. And I think that there's definitely a need for us to educate um the developer community and particularly the investor community to understand that there is a market which is higher than the average rentals for a tenement. Um but there's clearly a gap for that. Um so we have started soft testing this with developers and there is a a a great deal of interest in this. It's not to say that projects will come forward immediately due to the construction inflation issue and uncertainties around uh financial markets, but we certainly think this helps us create a prospectus to market such developments to to developers and investors.
Thanks, Robyn. Uh Billy McPherson?
No, I'm very happy with that response and and I I as I say, a very positive report and very pleased to see it coming forward. Thanks, convenor.
Thanks very much. Uh councillor McHugh, I see you're next.
Thank you. Um and can I add my comments to what's already been said? It's it's a good report and an ambitious and exciting plan, a beautifully laid out plan, actually. Um I have one question, um and that relates to three point one. Um I note there's engagement of consultants to support the plan development. And in three point one, it says costs will be met from the existing budget. Uh I would like to know how much will we be planning to spend on consultants for the work on this plan?
Thank you. Mr Presswood?
Uh convenor, many thanks. The the reference to three point one is is to the consultation um on the plan. So the costs largely will be such as um populating the website, writing out to formal consultees and then staff time in terms of digesting those responses, making appropriate amendments. So so the cost of that would be comparatively limited. Uh the 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 cost of the consultants that that helped um in in terms of preparing some of the background materials. I don't have that time, but it was the subject of a a committee report previously, so I'll get that and send it direct to councillor McHugh.
Okay, thanks very much for that.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, councillor McHugh. Uh councillor Rome, please.
Uh thank you, convenor. Um this this has already been done already uh very eloquently by Bailey McPherson and yourself, but I can't let the opportunity pass without noting also my thanks to officers for what is a is an extremely well put together and strategic document. Um I would describe it as a labour of love. I I don't know, given how long it was worked on, if that's really the right term. But uh officers, you know, they had a lot of, shall we say, constructive feedback. It's all been it's all been taken on board and put in into the plan. And I think this is a document that Dundee can be proud of. It's a it's a future looking document. It's one that has strategic aims. Uh and and whilst we're all aware of the financial constraints that we're in at the moment, it's still a bold document. It's very much one that looks to the future, uh at times where we'll be less constrained. Uh and as I say, it is strategic. Um I'm looking at mainly at section four point one two. We've got early wins here. We've we've got things that we can see in a very short time period. Um you know, we're talking the next decade uh as well as looking over to the next thirty years. But I mean, this is for investors. This is again for people looking at Dundee in the same way that the waterfront was for that. But I think it's a very well put together document. It's a very strategic document. Uh and clearly, it's it's not it's not everything. I mean, there will be things that get tweaked in it. But I think it's it's a great, fantastic thing that we can build on. Uh and again, I would highlight the the early wind projects, the city centre events, uh Union Street pedestrianisation, growing the evening economy and the commercial waste pilot are all things that can make our city centre better and achievable in a fairly short space of time. So again, very grateful to officers and glad that can be put on record.
Thank you for that. Thank you for your comments. And I'm sure Mr Presswood will pass on to the the team. Uh because there's a lot of people put a lot of effort into this report. Uh councillor Short, please.
Thank you, convenor. Um probably ten years ago in my previous lifetime, I would have been speaking about a report like this and trying to encourage people to come in and invest the money in the city. And the early investors being the ones that would uh gain the most. Um I happened to take a wee wander up the Muddy Gate today and the new flats that have gone into the Gap site um are absolutely beautiful. They're really, really good. Um and so that sort of thing does help to encourage the the nightlife. Um I'm just looking perhaps for a little steer with regards to where we sit um as a city very ambitious. However, um in an investor's world, is Britain the place that people are investing? And thank goodness, we do have quite a lead time on this because um do we have an idea of how quickly things are going to change? And how do we um pull in that investment so that it comes into to Dundee rather than going into anywhere else?
Interesting comments. Uh Mr Presswood, please.
Uh many thanks, uh councillor Short and convenor. Um my crystal ball doesn't extend to to knowing how long the war in Ukraine and and the current crisis in the financial markets and mortgage rates will extend. Uh but we are preparing materials and engaging with the developer community. So once the the various current challenges are are concluded, we'll be in a strong position to work with those developers to to bring forward schemes. I think members will be aware that there's several consented schemes within the central area, particularly for purpose built student accommodation. Um so we maintain links with those developers, we nurture them, we reach out proactively to them to make sure that uh what once the markets have calmed, we will be in a position to bring some of these schemes forward. Because we're we're absolutely clear that getting two or three schemes on site is the best way to to attract more market interest. Uh because success will follow success. Uh but I think councillor Short's highlighted some of the key challenges and we're certainly hopeful that we'll be in a position to respond very rapidly.
Yeah, thanks for that. And and I'll throw in the comment with regards to we need the UK government to sort things sorted with regards to stabilizing things and then making sure that investors do have the confidence to invest in different parts of the country, especially in Dundee. I have to say, uh I don't see any other questions, so I'll take that as agreed. Thank you very much. Have the next one, please, Arlene.
Item seven, city centre commercial waste pilot. This is for approval.
Yes, this has been long coming. This is a report seeks approval to introduce a pilot project to enhance the city centre by reducing the number of commercial waste containers on our public roads and footpaths and changing the way in which commercial waste can be presented and collected by but for collection by businesses. Uh the pilot project implements one of the commitments of our Take Pride in Our Year City campaign, which was brought to committee a short time ago and will deliver improvements to the public realm in the city centre. So I see councillor Crichton, I think you were first there, please.
Uh thank you, convenor. Um I welcome the inclusion of Westport slash South A Street area in the West End ward um in these issues because they're similar to the core city centre. And can I ask what the possibility um is of similar measures in the future in district shopping centres? And where this can be, like similar issues can be applied. Thank you, convenor.
Thank you. As I said, it's a pilot project, so who knows what could happen. But I'm bringing uh Mr Hamilton, if he's on the call.
Thank you, convenor. Um I would reiterate your comment. This is a pilot uh that we will be undertaking over the next year. And obviously, the experience that we gain from operating the pilot can then inform future decisions about potentially rolling that out to other areas. I would say that some of the issues experienced in the city centre in terms of the prevalence of commercial waste containers are not as evident in other district centres, but it's certainly something that we can look at, as I say, based on the experience over the next twelve months.
Thank you. Mr Cressley?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Hamilton. That's all. Thanks for that.
I'd like to make a comment here if that's actually okay, just to sort of say, well done and congratulations and thanks to the city centre manager. Because she's done a lot of good work up to this date in bringing this report, first and foremost. When building this report, she's actually done a lot of work and actually doing a lot of getting all the bins removed and working with businesses prior to the report coming. So I have to thank her for her efforts on this topic. Bailey Scott, please. We have a bit of IT issues, I think. I'll bring in Counselor Rome and I'll go back. Counselor Rome?
Thank you, Convena. As often happens in our group discussions, you've taken the words out of my mouth here. I was going to thank Gainer for all of her efforts because I think anyone that knows what she's been doing in the city centre knows the achievements that she's already made in terms of smartening up our city centre and reducing the number of bins that are there. Can I just say that whilst this report has taken a while, I'm very pleased with its current format and cautiously optimistic for this pilot, which will hopefully be a success. And again, it's one of the quick actions that are referenced in the previous report of four point one two. So if we can get this coming in in the new year, hopefully we'll see an instant improvement in the city centre and something we can build on and maybe look at for future areas.
Thank you for that. Bailey Scott?
Sorry, Convena, I got thrown out of the system for a wee bit there. But I think Counselor Crichton may have asked a question I was going to ask, which was regarding rolling that out to district shopping centres after the pilot, if the pilot is successful and it's agreed that we want to do that. Because we're promoting Brody Ferry as a visitor destination. And it's important we have the streets there looking really nice and appealing as well.
Yeah, I think you, Mr. Hamilton touched upon it. It's a pilot project and we hope to learn from it and hopefully it's successful. And we see a difference in the city centre when we can learn to go to the district shopping centres, including one in my own ward as well. So thanks very much for that. I see no more questions or comments, so I can take this as agreed. Thank you very much. Aline, next, please.
Item eight, management and review of thin-walled carbon steel pipe work. You have the report before you.
No, thank you for that. I just take the report as read. Any questions? I see Bailey Keenan, you're first, please.
Can we know, within the report, it mentions that they'll implement a planned monitoring and maintenance service contract at some time. You know, given that we've got now probably two million pounds worth of spend in repairing systems that have had thin-walled carbon pipes, such as the Olympia and Dundee House. You know, what, what are the additions that will be in this maintenance plan that we didn't have before? Because, you know, quite a number of radiators needed replaced in Dundee House. So that would suggest to me that the fluid that was in these was less than adequate and didn't have enough inhibitors in it.
I won't go to the technicalities of the whole thing, but I'll let Mr. Martin answer your question.
Thanks, Convena. Thanks, Bailey Keenan. So essentially, it's, as it suggests, it's monitoring. So it is a case of looking at the balance of the water and the chemicals in the system and looking at it on a regular basis. So adjustments can be made for each of the systems to mitigate any contamination in the systems and also reduce any pace of corrosion. So if systems do need to be placed, we've got that longevity, not having to react as quickly as we had for Dundee House. And we can plan and look at doing works along with some other improvement works that we carry out under the operational programme within the capital plan.
Bailey Keenan?
So a much more robust scheme than we previously operated?
It's a more systematic scheme and having an external consultant carrying out lab checks on it. So yeah, there's more systematic in place.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. Counselor Coleman, please.
Yeah, thanks for sticking with me. I think the substantive point to my question has been answered, so I'm fine. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. I can take this report as read and agreed. Yep. Okay. Thank you very much for that. Next one, Aline, please.
Item nine, Dundee Development Plan Scheme twenty twenty-two. This is for approval.
Quite straightforward. The report seeks the approval of Development Plan Scheme, which Council is required to publish annually and set up the programme for preparing and reviewing our local development plan. Do we have any questions? I don't see we do. So I'll take that as agreed. Thank you very much. Next one, Aline, please.
Item ten, tenders received by head of design and property. This is for approval.
Again, I'll just take the report as read. And any questions? No, I don't see any questions. So just take that as agreed as well. Thank you very much. Next one, Aline, please.
Item eleven, supply of vehicles in plant. This is for approval.
Again, just quite straightforward. Change of vehicles and upgrading to electric RCVs. One technicality, as I understand, the CO2 emissions at the end in one of the appendices, it actually should say two point six tonnes per vehicle per annum and not two point six kilograms, just for reference. It's a lot more substantial than what it says. So no questions or comments. So thank you very much for that. I'll take that as agreed as well. Thank you, Aline. That's the city development business. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you, Convena. The next committee is the Neighbourhood Services Committee.
Thank you. Welcome to Neighbourhood Services. I understand it's Mr. Waddell who is leading on this. We'll hand over to you, Lee.
Thanks very much, Convena. Firstly, are there any declarations of interest? And there. Thank you, Counselor McHugh.
Yes, sorry. I'm a council tenant. And I understand that this doesn't constitute a conflict of interest in terms of the councillor's code of conduct. I've been advised by Mr. Many on this.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor McHugh. Mr. Waddell?
Yeah, thanks very much. Item two then, before you say review of rents and other housing charges, you have to agree the proposals.
Thank you. So the Review of Rents and Other Charges Report, which is before you, sets out the proposed rent and other housing charges for the financial year twenty twenty-three to twenty-four. It makes recommendations to consult with tenants on rent increase options, which would be due for implementation from third April twenty twenty-three at the end of the current freeze period, unless the freeze is extended. Over the past few months, officers have reviewed and updated the provisional HRA revenue budget for twenty-three twenty-four and highlighted that there will be an expected deficit of one point five six three million pounds on a recurring cost. This deficit can only be met by applying a rent increase of three percent, which is considerably lower than the current rates of inflation, which are sitting at over ten percent. Increases for the other housing charges have also been set out within this report. And council house tenants in these consultations are given the opportunity to indicate their preference on rent increase options. And this year, they will be given options of three percent, three point two, five percent and three point five percent. Each option explains what additional services would be provided from the funding raised by those increases. The report reflects on the cost of living crisis, particularly highlighting the Scottish Government Cost of Living Tenant Protection Scotland Bill, which received royal assent on the twenty-seventh of October. That will ensure that there is a rent freeze in place until the thirty-first of March, as previously mentioned. If the rent freeze is prolonged, there will be no increase in the rents in Dundee. And we would come back to the committee with a further report. The report is also recognising the impact of the cost of living increase and it includes a proposal that we double the hardship fund to one million pounds to support Dundee City Council tenants. And we wish to double the fund and also recommend that the criteria for the hardship fund is extended to support tenants who are not in receipt of housing benefit or universal credit and widen that scope of support to more tenants than currently receive it. The current proposed increase of three percent would allow services to continue to invest in areas that the tenants have highlighted as their priorities. These include energy efficiency schemes, helping tenants to sustain their tenancies and increase the supply of affordable housing. Finally, the report reflects on recent guidance received from the Scottish Housing Regulator, which recognises that the process of determining rent levels, in addition to consulting with tenants, takes a number of months. That's why we're bringing the report to you now. And it advises local authorities to proceed with the current process of consultation to ensure that we are in a position to increase rents from first April, if we are permitted to do so. So in this report, you're being asked to approve the consultation. Note the provisional budgets for twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-five, twenty-six. Note the other housing charges included in appendix two. Agree that the only rent increases that could be imposed are the ones that we have consulted on. Note that the impact of the rent cap beyond thirty-first March twenty twenty-three will be brought back to the committee if it's extended. And importantly, delegate authority to the executive director of corporate services to amend the hardship policy to include those who are experiencing hardship but who are not in receipt of either housing benefit or universal credit. So I am asking the committee to approve those recommendations. I could see that councillor Shears has proposed an amendment. Can we circulate the amendment? Sorry, I could see Mr. Many is wishing to come in.
Thanks very much, Convena. I see from the chat that councillor Finnegan wishes to make a declaration.
Oh, sorry.
It's just to say that I'm, sorry, it's just to say that I'm also a council tenant.
Thank you. So we have an amendment from councillor Shears. Can I ask that that is circulated? And while that's happening, councillor Shears, do you wish to speak to your amendment? Or should, would you rather wait until we see it?
I'm happy to speak to it as it comes. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak on it as well. What essentially the amendment proposes is that instead of council tenants being consulted on a rent increase, that they are consulted on a rent freeze. And we are living in the most volatile times that any of us can remember. Food prices, inflation, energy prices, they're all at record levels. And we've got a UK government whose main focus is on petty power squabbles, rather than delivering any help to those who need it most. And that's why I believe that as a council, we have responsibility and a duty to help our citizens where we can. And this amendment, it's not going to fix the cost of living crisis, but it is going to ease the burden on some of the city's families who are struggling the most with this Tory-run economic meltdown. Three pound a week doesn't seem a lot, but when you are budgeting for every single penny, it can make a huge difference. It's the price of a bag of food at a community larder over a year adds up to a month's worth of energy bills. It's been able to afford period products this month for people that live in period poverty. And for those who need it the most, it will make a difference. And we do have the funds available to make that difference. Our amendment is proposing to take money out of reserves that have been built up through a surplus in the housing revenue account and return that money back to the rent payers of Dundee. It's paid for by council tenants. It's putting money back in their pocket. And there doesn't need to be a denigration of services, repairs or maintenance. It's often said that these reserves are rainy day funds. And if the economic situation right now isn't a rainy day, then it don't, and what is? It's a one-off extraordinary move in what are extraordinary times. And of course, we recognise that not all Dundee City Council tenants will benefit from a rent freeze, such as those who are covered by universal credit. But the economic crisis is at the point that even people who work in a full-time job, multiple part-time jobs, are struggling to feed their families and heat their homes. And we also recognise that this may lead to proposed increases in future years that will be slightly higher. However, by the time twenty twenty-four comes around, I'm sure we all hope the economic turmoil is settled and people are in a more secure financial position. It's also really important to note that although the actual percentage of a future rent, the actual percentage that a future rent consultation would propose would be higher, the amount of rent paid would remain the same as what is already proposed. But within all this, we really do need to take into account with what we know is going to happen. And that's in April twenty twenty-three. Energy bill is going to be doubled again. Inflation's predicted to be near twenty percent and more and more people are in poverty. And our parties have done it at a national level. Labour led the push for the rent freeze. The SNP and Green government took on that policy and the Lib Dem supported it. So why can't we come together now at a local level? For all the differences in the parties, we do all recognise that poverty and inequality is the single biggest issue in Dundee right now. And of course, we hope that the Scottish government extends the rent freeze and also funds it the way that they did the council tax freeze. But we can't sit on our hands and wait for them to do that. We can put certainty in people's minds that when the energy bill is going to double again in April twenty twenty-three, at least their rent won't be. And I'm sure all of us on this committee have seen firsthand the impact this crisis has had on our constituents. And I'm sure all of us want to be able to say that Dundee City Council is doing everything we can to help them. And we can help people with this rent freeze. So I really urge this committee to please accept this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Shears. I could see that Mr. Many wishes to come in, so I'll let him come in at this point.
Thank you very much, Convena. Before councillor Shears calls his second, can I please note that Bailey Scott has marked a question in the chat? And you may wish to take that question before the second. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Many. Bailey Scott, would you like to ask your question at this point?
Sorry, Convena. I put in the chat before Pete moved his amendment. So it's not related at all to the amendment. It's a completely different question. Is that okay?
Yes.
But it's to do with the sheltered housing charge. And this was covered, the briefing that we had, but I'm just wondering if I could get an explanation from it for tonight, please. And I'm speaking from my experience of the sheltered housing in the area I represent, but I'm sure it's replicated across all the sheltered housing complexes in the city. In my, in Fort Hills Sheltered Housing Complex, there used to be four wardens. And over the years, that's dropped to three and then two. And now there's only one. And that complex is linked with another complex. So the one warden is doing more than ever before. I have a surgery there every Saturday morning. And blimey, they don't have, work their socks off. They're really, really busy. And I get nothing but compliments from the tenants about what a great job the wardens are doing when they're there. The complex used to be bustling, events on every daytime, every evening. And on Saturday, when I was there, the place was just full of people all the time. So I would have thought in any report on the costs of of this, we would have seen a reduction in the shelter charge, rather than an increase, given that the vast majority of the costs to the budget are staffing costs. And the staffing complement seems to have gone down quite considerably in that service. So I just wondered why there's an increase rather than a decrease.
Bailey Scott, I think we'll try and answer that question now and then we'll get back to the amendment. My sense, I'm informed that there hasn't been an increase in the charge for eleven, it's been increased twice in eleven years. So part of the issue is the charge hasn't increased while wages have gone up and costs have gone up. But I'll let Aline Swirley come in and respond to your question.
Thank you, Convena, and thank you for your question, Bailey Scott. The service is budgeted to break even. And as the convener has said, we've attempted to maintain those charge levels for a number of years. But with the increases in costs, particularly around staffing levels and wage increases, we feel that this modest increase is required in order to balance the budget in terms of making itself financing.
Bailey Scott, do you wish to follow up? Are you satisfied with that reply?
I think it would be useful to make tenants aware of that. And I noticed in the, we circulated today the outcome of a survey that was done with tenants as well, sheltered tenants. So it might be useful to include on the costs involved in providing the sheltered service, because I frequently get told, asked, what are we getting for what, for the amount that we're paying, a huge amount every week? And what do we see for it? So it would be useful if something like that was included on the information that's sent out.
Happy to do that, Convena.
Thank you. That'd be great. councillor Shears, my apologies for that interruption. We'll come back to your amendment. I just wanted to say that you know, we fully understand where you are coming from with this amendment. We investigated all the options and we wanted to make sure that we were still able to meet tenant aspirations on investment and maintenance as well as protecting them from the increases. And that's why we decided that the three percent increase would actually ensure that we could carry on with the work that we're doing, the work that tenants are asking us to do. But also ensure that the twenty-six percent of tenants who pay their rents from private means are not disadvantaged. So that's why there's the proposal to double the hardship fund. And as we both understand, like this is a Westminster caused cost of living crisis and the Scottish government are doing an enormous amount to mitigate it at national level. And Dundee City Council is doing an enormous amount to mitigate it at a local level. And Dundee City Council is doing an enormous amount to mitigate it at a local level. But our, our thinking was that the percentage increase would enable us to do what tenants are asking us to do and the hardship fund will ensure that nobody is harmed. Can I ask if you have a second for your amendment at this stage?
I'm seconding councillor McHugh.
Do you wish to speak at this point, councillor McHugh? You're, Dorothy, you're on.
Okay, sorry. I do this all the time. Yes, I'm delighted to second councillor Shears' amendment. We're in the midst of a cost of living crisis. It's happening now and there's nothing to suggest it won't extend well into twenty twenty three and beyond. Costs are escalating at an alarming rate and we witness huge price hikes day on day. The emergency is already here. These increases save our citizens. They impact the poorest the most. A rent increase just adds another layer of burden to a family's already strained budget. The coming winter will see many struggling to heat or eat. To be plain, that's a choice.
Sorry, councillor McHugh, you've gone on mute.
Sorry, I need to keep my hands away from the keyboard. This coming winter, did I say that? This coming winter will see many struggling to heat or eat. To be plain, that's a choice between hypothermia or hunger. And some will not even have that choice. They won't be able to afford either. The proposed rent increase will add around two pounds fifty a week to average rent. That'll buy a bag of groceries from a food larder. Adding on another three percent for sheltered tenant service charges means an increase of three pounds twenty six a week for sheltered tenants and that money could go in the meter. And increasing heating costs for tenants at Brinton and Balloonie Field will add six pounds a week to their total. That's more than three hundred pounds over the year. I'm sure most older people, already frugal, could find a better use for that money. This is not a time for a rent increase. We can't do this. Our tenants can't afford it. And for those that argue that seventy four percent of tenants receive housing benefit, not all of them get the maximum and they still pay some portion of their rent. Housing benefit is funded by the taxpayer. So increasing three percent will just add to their financial burden. The nine point eight million pounds of reserves transferred as surpluses over previous years from the housing revenue account is rent money from tenants. If there was ever a time to use some of those reserves, this is it. The transfer from reserves for twenty three, twenty four will plug the gap created by not increasing rents. No rent increase this coming year will have a cumulative effect on the budget for twenty four, twenty five. And that can be managed. We'll just have to cut our cloth according to our means, as we all have to do in times of hardship. The imperative is now. We have the means to freeze rents for the coming year. I hope we have the will.
Thank you, councillor McHugh. You know, the fact is that seventy four percent of our tenants would not have extra funding if we imposed a freeze because they wouldn't be getting that money in their pockets, but they would be getting their rents paid. And we have also taken into account the people who receive partial benefits. And that's why we've come up with this doubling of the hardship fund and to bridge the gap and make sure that no one is disadvantaged. And the situation is also that if we have a one point six million pound hole in the council housing revenue account this year, that accumulates, so next year, the increase would have to be even greater. And we're very aware, as you can see from the report, that there's a whole host of things happening in terms of increasing prices and supply costs. So the reserves are there to be used to maximum effect. And in proposing our motion, I would be arguing that this would not be the best use of reserves at this time when those costs can be met through other means. And we will use the reserves to increase the hardship fund. I'm going to ask for a second for my motion at this point, then bring in councillor McPherson and then I could see councillor Tolland. Do I have a second for my motion? Right, thank you. You haven't got a second yet.
I'll formally second you, convener.
Thank you, thank you. Right, I'll bring in councillor McPherson first with a comment.
Okay, thanks.
Bailey McPherson, sorry.
No worries. Thank you, convener. And I thank in advance councillor Shears for the discussion and a copy in advance of his amendment. And our group discussed this at length. The first point I would make is that earlier this year, councillors Coleman and Crichton moved and seconded that the council declare a cost of living emergency, recognising the massive challenges facing citizens right across the city in terms of this really challenging situation we find ourselves in. And we feel that actions on this really speak louder than words, if it's to mean anything. Now, we will support councillor Shears. We don't do this sort of thing lightly. Our group fully accept that you cannot freeze rents forever. For example, in relation to what has been done nationally for six months. If you did that ad infinitum, eventually, to be honest, landlords would start to lose, leave the market. That would increase scarcity. Therefore, rents when you do lift a rent freeze would rocket through the roof. But what the Scottish Parliament recognised and our party supported it was, we're in a crisis. We are absolutely in a crisis at the moment, facing so many of our tenants. And the, and we equally fully accept you can't do this to the HRA indefinitely. You'd bust it. But as a one-off measure, just in the same way as the Scottish Parliament has done, this proposal from councillor Shears has a lot of merit. Let's bear in mind that the Scottish Parliament measures for six months actually have no benefit to council tenants, not just here but right across Scotland, other than the ban on repossession for six months. Because rents in the public sector increase in April. So in a way, we are replicating what has already been done for so many private sector tenants. We are replicating that for our own tenants. And although I fully accept a great many of our tenants are on universal credit, the reality is a great many are not. And I spoke, actually, a lady who contacted me last weekend, it was actually about repair. But she was really quite emotional and in tears and she was, and she's on full rent, I should say. But through fuel, the fear of housing costs increasing, cost of food, cost of living generally, she feels really under pressure and she just speaks for so, so many people. Well, the point is this. The head of corporate finance confirmed to me that there is a nine point eight six million pound surplus in relation to the renewal and repair fund. And I think councillor Shear alluded, councillor Shears rather alluded to that. And I have to say as well, I hear what you say about the hardship fund and that's welcome. But in a way, what we're doing is we would be increasing rents to help increase a fund to help mitigate the effect of the rent increase that we've just imposed on our tenants. Something slightly perverse about that. And I think, as I say, we wouldn't support this repeatedly. We don't think it's economically literate to do it repeatedly. But certainly, given the huge crisis that we're in for so, so many of our tenants, for the next financial year, as a one-off, we can see a lot of merit in it. We must, must help our tenants at such a critical time. And for that reason, we will be supporting councillor Shears' amendment. Thank you, convener.
Thank you, Bailey McPherson. I can see councillor Alexander next.
Thank you very much, convener. So I'll maybe start, I must say, I'm slightly disappointed and surprised. So to my knowledge, and I'm hoping it's an oversight rather than deliberate, but none of my group were contacted in advance or had the opportunity to discuss the motion that's before us tonight, which I think is hopefully an oversight, given that the administration does have a majority. And if there was a genuine attempt to engage, we would have been more receptive to that. So with that comment made, can I start by saying I think the aims and objectives are ones that we would all share and certainly laudable. I think my comments on the current crisis are a matter of public record and I am, I'm sure equally as concerned as every other member of this committee on the impacts that we have. When we consider the rent consultation, of course, we're considering more than just those individual circumstances. And I think I want to just pick up on one point that was made. In terms of the sixty, sorry, seventy six percent of tenants who are on partial or full housing benefit, it is the case that if they were paying ten pound a week now, the rent increase has increased, they will still only be paying ten pound because partial HB, that increase is also covered. So I just wanted to correct that and make sure that we were all aware of that. Later tonight, we will also consider a report in my committee on the revenue position of the council. And there's specific reference in there to the HRA in terms of a half a million pound overspend, which relates, or four hundred and fifty thousand pounds to be precise, against the adjusted HRA and the impact on that ha in terms of the renewal and repair fund. And I also think that we need to look at that in the context of what we've also asked for of the HRA and of the housing department. So again, going to that report, there will be reference to the fact that that overspend relates to trying to catch up with relits and repairs, something which I know both the Labour Group and other members, including our own, have been very passionately advocating in terms of the work that's required. So I know that that renewal and repair fund is going to be called upon, not only during this evening's discussions when we go into the revenue report, but in the coming months, as we continue to try to push through the backlog of repairs and relits. And it's right that we use that renewal and repair fund for that purpose. That's what it's there to do. And I completely agree that it's there to support our tenants. There was reference made that, you know, this is a one-off, but it's not and we can't lose sight of that. So all we do is store up a further problem for the next year. So instead of, you know, one point six million pounds this year and then it disappears because we've done it for one year. It's a recurring cost. So that one point six million pops back up next year on top of whatever other pressures will come down the line. So we could very much be looking at a six percent rent increase if what we do is freeze rents this year. Now, I don't think in any financial year a six percent or thereabouts, and I know I'm picking a number, but I think based upon our current predicament and also in recent years, I think that's a realistic expectation. I don't think rent payers will thank us, thank us for that, particularly in the knowledge that housing benefit will cover for the vast majority. Now, I don't think that takes away from the point fundamentally that's been made in terms of those that are paying full rent, of which twenty four percent of our rent payers are in that collective. But as my colleague has said, there are other measures that we're looking to take forward in addition to not only the hardship fund and the significant increase. And I don't need to, I'm sure, go through with members, the other mitigation that has been deployed from, you know, the expansion of an enhancement related to crisis funds and DHPs. The moratorium, of course, on evictions, the fuel well scheme and a whole host of other supports that are being deployed locally and nationally, and all of that will help. But I can't sit here and sign up to something that potentially will cause even more significant impact when we go forward next year. And I think we need to see it in the totality of what we are expecting from the HRA and from housing officials when we are rightly pressuring for more external wall insulation. We're looking for greater works to be undertaken on relits and repairs to catch up with the backlog as a result of COVID. All of that will have an impact. And if we're already seeing partway through the year, four hundred and fifty thousand pounds of additional costs coming through, that I think will probably be replicated in future reports, which will call upon the renewal and repair fund. So I think with all of that said, and whilst I absolutely gladly accept that this is coming from a good place, with that one point about please engage with us in advance next time, then I have to back the convener on this occasion. And I think the approach that's being taken is the right one right now, with all the mitigation that we can possibly deploy and the knowledge that we are trying to support those tenants, not just directly through what we do in the HRA, but beyond that, through the other measures and projects that we've brought forward in recent months. Thank you, convener.
Thank you, councillor Alexander. Can I bring in councillor El Naklo, please?
Thank you, councillor Alexander, for taking some of the points that I was going to make. But I guess another question would be have councillor Shears contacted Elaine Swirley and discussed the actual, what would happen if you were to do this? We've had discussions. We're all extremely anxious about the cost of living crisis. We want to help in as many ways as possible. But what would happen, the impact, you would be taking money from somewhere else. So housing repairs, our tenants deserve to have a high level and a high standard, which most of them are happy with. They need to keep that level and continue with repairs and to bring down the number of boys and all of that. Taken from one side to mitigate what is a crisis made by the Tory government. And what I think in this circumstances is not being mentioned is actually it's the SNP government which has frozen the rent prices. This is not a Labour policy. You're asking it to be extended when the, when the first minister has already stated that she will extend it if deemed necessary. But with seventy four percent on housing benefits, that money will come from there. So it is discussions about where would you take the money from in terms of the budgets? Would there be no repairs? Would you end capital projects? No new housing? So it's the, it's the impact. Yes, we all want a fix to help people. I know that it's all come from a place where we're desperate to help people, but there are ramifications when we do things like this. And those ramifications, which have been discussed at length. And again, as councillor Alexander says, if there's been an opportunity to discuss this further and whether you've went to council officers, they would tell you that these, these reports have been drafted and to look at all the different ways we can continue to mitigate. But the problem is, we cannot continue to mitigate Tory austerity. The only way to mitigate Tory austerity is to not be part of the UK anymore. So I don't know whether Elaine wants to come in and give some information on the reports that I've seen. That's just made unfortunately, this, this move completely impractical would result in a worse situation for our tenants. Yeah, Elaine might want to pop it, just to come in and give that in more detail.
Councillor El Nakla, I mean, we have, I have got lists in front of me of the planned maintenance works and investments. And we did look at those reports and consider what would have to stop, what would have to not go ahead. And I don't know, Elaine, if you would like to come in with any more detail on that or you're happy with my response. We're talking about re-roofing, window replacement, general maintenance, new build, external wall insulation, all these programmes would be impacted.
Thank you, convener. Just to see the, the report before you is about funding the capital programme as well, which covers all the items you've discussed.
Okay, I'll bring in Bailey Keenan next.
I'm able to see where there is an argument in the proposal cutting any kind of repair and maintenance budgets. Or surely we've put together a request to increase rents by three percent, supposedly building in all the repairs and maintenance and investment that was needed. And Pete's given how that gap can be filled by using one point six million for repairs and renewables fund that the housing revenue accounts had stashed away for a time. There is no plan for you to spend it with that complete money within what your proposals are here. There's no telling the, the public that they've got that sitting in surplus. Yet you're determined to put the rents up. Your, your Scottish government haven't done anything, anything towards mitigating the rent for the rent payer in Dundee. Council rent payer in Dundee. They might well have done in the private sector, but they've done nothing for anyone elsewhere. That's how we need to do something for the people in Dundee and the people that we represent and the rent payers that we represent and put it through as suggested. So I'll be supporting Pete's motion to freeze the rents.
Sorry, I've seen. Thank you, Bailey Keenan. And I'll bring in councillor Tolland.
Thank you. I mean, that's kind of a bit unfair, Bailey Keenan, because actually, as Nadia has also suggested, you know, there is a freeze on rents up to March. That is a tangible and real. Eh, that is a tangible and real impact and a real strategy that the Scottish government has actually put in place, put in by the S N P government. I'm just want to make a few points though, because actually eh, one thing that's not really been raised here is the opinion and understanding from the Scottish Federation of Housing Associations. So as, as, as council, as, as running kind of council houses, we sit within that kind of wider, wider process of social housing now. Eh, at the S N P conference, actually, the S N P government were actually given a bit of stick by the Scottish Federation of Housing Associations because of the freeze, because of the freeze. Now, what Sally Thomas, the chief executive said, was that actually they're concerned about the, not only the freeze, but the extension of that freeze, because what they will, what they, what it will result in is quote, housing association has been forced to cut back on vital support services for tenants, the development of new homes, improvement to eh existence stock and the pursuit of net, net zero target. So to a certain extent, the, the housing associations are sitting in, in alignment with us and in the understanding that actually what we have to balance now, and this is, this is the downside of being in power. What you have to balance is, is the short term pain for the longer term solutions. What we don't want is a deterioration of our housing stock for the longer term. We don't want increased homelessness, which was one of the issues. Tenants said that they would be quite willing to have an increase for last year. Eh, so there's those kind of issues that we have to do. There's a balance between what you want is a continuous of the freeze. But actually, housing associations are actually asking that we be very careful in that freeze because of the long term implications of this. I'm also going to just mention that Angus Housing, their consultation this year is between four and six per cent. So in actual fact, in comparison to ours, it's actually much, much higher. I'm also going to raise an issue, Pete, and you mentioned earlier on about this being a labour policy. But I've not saw anybody actually criticise the West Lothian Council. West Lothian Council, as you may be aware, is a labour minority controlled council in alignment with the Conservatives now. They increased their rent by three per cent last year. That was double the increase of the S N P eh council in Dundee. But their consultation this year is between three per cent and four per cent. That's the two choices that have been given, ends in the twelfth of December twenty twenty two. So this is not a labour policy. This is something that Dundee, Dundee Labour have decided to put forward, but not actually criticise their own labour colleagues in West Lothian. Now, West Lothian Council have basically said, the paper that they put forward, has actually said in alignment actually with us, that they need to think about long term gain. And what they, what they had suggested is the three point five or the four per cent was for more house building programmes. So we do have that kind of balance to, to, to take forward here. I do think there's an element of, I hate to say this, but just because the S N P does it, it doesn't make it bad. You know, we have thought long and hard about this. We've worked very hard on mitigating eh poverty, mitigating the austerity agenda, which was set up in two thousand and ten, by the way, with the Conservatives and the Lib Dems. Eh, we've worked really, really hard to do this. Eh, and we can't constantly be criticised, as Nadia said. It's the, we're given, we're given, we're, we're given a water in can to put out a forest fire, given how our hands are tied behind the back because we don't have independence. These are the real issues that we have to, we have to kind of take forward. Eh, I'm, I'm assuming after this meeting that you'll put out a statement criticizing West Lothian Council for their increase, given, given that they're doing the same, in fact, actually higher.
Thank you, councillor Tolland. Eh, I can see that councillor McHugh would like to come in, but councillor McHugh, you've had your chance to speak in this meeting as the formal seconder. So what I'm going to do now is come back to councillor Shears for his final comment and then I'll sum up.
Yes, thank you, convener. And I'm actually very disappointed with how that debate turned out. It just turned into a load of vitriol for him, a lot of it not at all true. Eh, so just to address a few points. First of all, councillor Alexander, it was an oversight that we didn't reach out to Heather. Eh, we were in discussions with officers until the deadline to get this motion into committee services. And being new to the council, I actually thought that amendments were shared with the convener, so I apologise for that. Still wet behind the ears, but I would be incredibly disappointed if the reason that you're not giving this more support is, is because we didn't approach you. Eh, I would hope that you could take it as it stands. Eh, in response to councillor El Nakla, the rent freeze is not going to lead to a denigration of repairs. As said, we are taking, we are taking this out of reserve. So in the initial report, the one point six million says it would lead to repairs because we don't have that. We can backfill that from the repair renewal fund, which is currently unbudgeted for. As we discussed with officers, so Elaine, Paul Thompson and Louise Butcher, we met a few times, we exchanged a lot of emails, and I'd like to say thanks to your help eh, that they gave us, but it would not hit repairs. In the initial report, it would hit repairs because there was no provision for taking money out of reserves. What we're proposing to do is take money out of the reserves. It wouldn't lead to a denigration of services. Those money, that money is sitting gathering dust at the moment while we have people cold and starving. Eh, and in response to Chibon, I, I don't know about West Lothian Council. I don't look at West Lothian Council, to be honest, but I find it quite ironic. You're criticising them for the very thing eh that you're proposing your administration to do. And I've not criticised the S N P at all. I recognise that this is a difficult situation. Eh, and I appreciate the work that must have gone into it. So again, I'm disappointed that how that debate turned out when I was hoping that we could come together as we have before. Eh, but once again, convener, I would urge you to accept the amendment. It's costed, it won't lead to a denigration of repairs. I take your point that it may lead to a higher rent increase in the future, but the actual amount of rent that would be paid would remain the same. It would be a slightly larger jump, yes. But right now, people need the help.
Thank you, councillor Shears. I'll conclude and respond to a number of those comments. One, I can absolutely confirm that eh, the, the reason we're not accepting your amendment is not because you didn't share it with us. Eh, it's because we considered your course of action eh over the last few weeks and we've investigated all the options. And we believe that our proposal is the least worst version of what we can do. So yes, we can take the one point six million to plug the gap this year. The problem is that next year that gap accumulates to three point two million and the year after that it goes up again. So at some point, there has to be an even higher increase to bring things back into balance. And so that's what we were considering. We also considered that using the hardship fund enabled us to make sure that everyone who is actually going to be affected by this increase, the twenty four per cent of our tenants who are actually going to be affected and don't aren't disadvantaged and don't experience hardship. So we thought this was the most efficient use of that extra half million pounds to benefit the people who are at risk eh and ensure that everyone else is protected. And it gives us the money to continue to do the real work, which is the end, the wall, the external wall insulation, the energy efficient work, which has a long term impact on the cost of living crisis, not just a temporary impact. So I would like to move to the vote.
Okay, thanks very much, convener. Okay, the motion by the convener, second by Billy Dawson, is a report agreed as submitted. The amendment by councillor Shears, second by councillor McHugh, is as circulated. Convener?
Motion.
Mister Alexander?
Motion.
Lord Provost?
Motion.
Deputy Lord Provost?
Motion.
Billy Dawson?
The motion.
Mister El Nakla?
Motion.
Mister Flynn?
Motion.
Mister Hunter?
Motion.
Mister Lynn?
Motion.
Bailey Roberts?
Motion.
Thank you. Mister Rome?
Motion.
Bailey Soares?
Motion.
Bailey Soares?
Motion.
Mister Short?
Motion.
Mister Smith?
Motion.
Mister Tolland?
Motion.
Bailey Keenan?
Amendment.
Mister Crookshank?
Amendment.
Mister Finnigan?
Hintment.
Mister McHugh?
Amendment.
Mister McCurbin?
Amendment.
Mister Malone?
The amendment.
Mister Shears?
Amendment.
David Wright?
Amendment.
David McPherson?
The amendment.
Mister Coleman?
The amendment.
Mister Creighton?
The amendment.
Mister Duncan?
Amendment.
Bailey Scott?
Amendment.
Okay, that gives you fourteen for the motion and thirteen for the amendment. The motion is carried. You're on mute, convener.
Thank you, Mister Waddell. That's our meeting concluded. And if I can assure and the proposers of the amendment that we will be doing everything to make sure that people are fully aware of the terms of that hardship fund to make so make sure nobody is disadvantaged. Thank you.
Thank you, convener. The final meeting this evening is the Policy and Resources Committee. Good evening. Welcome to Policy and Resources. I am very conscious that we have now been eh going for two hours and forty minutes. So on that basis, can I suggest that we take a ten minute comfort break to allow people to stretch their legs, go to the toilet, fill their coffee cups? Eh, anybody disagree? No? Okay, so we'll come back at seven fifty one. Thank you. Okay, I think that's us all back. Thank you all very much. Eh, Willie, over to you.
Thank you very much. Firstly, are there any declarations of interest?
Any declarations?
Nope, okay. Being no declarations, then it takes you onto item two, the capital expenditure monitoring report, and this is for noting.
And this is the regular update report, so happy to take any questions. Bailey McPherson?
Yeah, just a very quick one, convener. It's in relation to the information on, in appendix two on page nine eh in relation to the town centre fund, which I've asked about progress eh within the past. Now, eh, the, the intention is that the eh projected completion date is March twenty three. Can I just have officers confirm that they're confident that all projects have been identified eh within that will actually be delivered by March twenty twenty three?
Okay, thanks very much for that. Eh, I think it's probably most appropriate to look to bring Robin in at this point, if Robin is on the call still.
Eh, Chair, yes, I am. Eh, I, I wonder whether we're, we're speaking at cross purposes because eh the, the one with multiple projects is the district shopping centre line eh rather than the town centre fund. Eh, I think Gregor is on the call, so I'll ask him maybe to, to provide an update. I'm not sure eh Bailey McPherson, whether that's correct. That, that you were talking about the town, the district centre fund rather than the town centre fund.
Right, okay, well, well, the, the, the wording, shall we say, is past me. I'm meaning the one with multiple projects, Robin. I'm just wanting assurance that the one with multiple projects eh, whether that's town or district, who knows? Eh, is, is actually on course.
Eh, Gregor, can I ask you to join in?
Gregor? Yeah, eh, thanks, convener. Eh, it is the district centre fund is the one that is used to eh promote projects within each of the five district shopping centres. I'm aware that there's a significant amount of work that is, is taking place across eh different, different district centres eh seeking to secure match funding. I'll provide Bailey McPherson with, with some detail on that eh tomorrow, if that's okay. I don't have it to hand tonight.
Okay, that, that's, that's quite okay. I think ju- just as a little point, I think it's quite useful. Now, I fully appreciate some funds are handed to us and already have a name, but I think it's quite useful if we have some quite clear eh eh differentiation because that, to my mind, I, I couldn't have told you which was, which, which was which, to be perfectly frank. But, but I'm grateful to Mister Hamilton. It's the one with the multiple projects that I'm obviously interested in. It obviously affects eh various district shopping centres. And I'm very grateful to Mister Hamilton for confirming that he'll, he'll update me. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Bailey McPherson. I, I'm happy to provide a little bit of clarity if I can. So the district shopping centre stemmed from our initial conversations in twenty seventeen, you'll remember eh, when I met with all the leaders of the opposition to discuss eh potential proposals and eh you know, joint ventures for want of a better description. The town centre fund is funding that has been deployed by the Scottish government and the city centre improvement fund stems from the S N P budget proposals that came earlier this year. So it is slightly complex, but hopefully that provides a little bit of clarification on top of the information that Gregor will circulate eh after the meeting. Thanks.
Yeah, I'm great, I'm grateful for that. I reiterate my point of, and I fully accept that things that come from Scottish government or UK government. You have no eh, you have absolutely no control over the name. But where we have funds of similar nature, I think it's just useful if we try and differentiate. But as I say, I'm, I'm grateful to Mister Hamilton and I'll, I'll wait to hear further. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see no other questions on this item, so can I take this as agreed? Thank you very much. Willie?
Okay, thanks. Takes you on to item three, the revenue monitoring report. You're asked to agree the recommendations.
Again, this is the regular update eh that we receive on the revenue report. So eh councillor Duncan?
Thanks, convener. Just a pretty quick question, I hope, eh with regards to six point five on page twenty five. Eh, we're, we're being told about the projected underspend of almost a million pound for the Dundee Health and Social Care Partnership. Eh, just really looking for the bit more detail as to how that might have arisen. And also, do we have an indication from the partnership if that underspend situation is likely, would it actually be the case at the end of the financial year?
Okay, thank you very much. There might be more of a detailed response to come after the meeting, but I know that Vicky is on the call, so eh, Vicky Irons, can I ask you to come in at this point, please?
Yes, apologies. I can't get my camera to work on Teams, so it would just, oh, there you go. We are working. Eh, so a full report has gone to the I G B in terms of the predicted eh outturn of the I G B and the current eh arrangements in terms of that underspend. So I'm happy to either provide that report eh which was taken to the I G B last week or provide an extract of that for members if that's felt to be useful.
Thanks, Vicky. I think that would be helpful because there'll obviously be a, a, you know, a, a bit of detail that sits behind that figure. So councillor Duncan, I'm, I'm presuming you're happy with that?
Yeah, I'm entirely happy with that. Thanks.
Thanks very much for the question and thanks, Vicky. Eh, Bailey Keenan?
Eh, it's an I G B one. It's eh councillor Duncan's prompted me to ask it. I understand that the Scottish government are looking to draw back any Covid eh monies that was given to I G Bs. And I'm wondering if eh we could have some detail of that as to whether they'll be successful in drawing that money back. And as to whether that'll affect the budgets going forward in any way eh as, as they stand.
Thanks for the question, Bailey Keenan. I think that's another one that Vicky can perhaps follow up with. It's not directly eh related to the item before us, but I'm happy for you to ask that question and receive a response thereafter. Vicky, is that something you can follow up with after the meeting and circulate around members?
Eh, I certainly can. And again, this was an issue which was discussed at the I G B meeting last week. Eh, and we are expecting further correspondence from Scottish government eh in connection with this. But I can provide eh the reports which were considered eh again to members eh once I've spoken to Dave Berry, who is not on the call this evening, but I can follow that up with him tomorrow.
Okay. You're on mute, convener.
Well, that's the first time I've done that in a while. Thank you very much, Bailey McPherson. Everybody else was just going to let me ramble and eh, yeah, yeah, I can see councillor Malone nodding away. Eh, thank you very much for your kindness there. Eh, any other questions on this? No? Okay, can I take this item as agreed, please? Thank you very much. Willie will move on.
Yeah, thank you. Item four, the communication strategy. You're asked to agree the report.
Again, you'll see this updated communication strategy. I think the media team have done a fantastic job. And I know that previously when we've discussed the communication strategy, I think we have rightly heaped praise on the work that they've eh undertaken, particularly during the Covid pandemic, where their efforts were not only noted by us, but other partners and agencies from NHS, the I G B and other charities and organisations in the city who really valued their support, their guidance and of course eh their provision of information as well that was being pushed out through all the council media channels as well. So really just want to again eh praise the team because I think they do do a fantastic job. I think this demonstrates the, the breadth of activity that's been undertaken, including eh the development and some of the imagery associated with things like the city plan, the council plan, the Dundee Climate Fund, the city marketing eh as well as several other eh important documents. So eh, I'll bring in Bailey McPherson.
Eh, thanks, convener. Simply another eh dollop of positivity here. Eh, but the, the, the point I would say, and, and I- But the point I would say, and I think it's an area where we've seen, you know, really positive direction over the last decade in terms of the way the council communicates. And I would say the communications team provide frankly a modern, responsive and dynamic approach to this area. And I think they do an extremely good job. They're also approachable. I had a particular query recently regarding one question within the revenue budget consultation. And there's a willingness, I won't go into that, but there's a willingness to listen as well and take your points on board. So I think, you know, I think where we see really positive work, I agree with the comments you've made, convenor. I think when we see very positive work, I think we should dollop on the praise. And I think it's very much warranted in this particular case.
Thank you very much for those comments. I'm sure officers will feed that back to the team as well. Thank you. Councillor Shaw?
Thank you, convenor. I want to add praise as well and more about the agility. Obviously, lessons were very much learned during Covid and those lessons are now being applied to the cost of survival crisis. For many in the city, it is a cost of survival, as a cost of living. And the team have been incredibly good at taking the information where support and help can be found and putting it into channels where people can see it and share it, and also in one place as well with on a webpage. So that's been incredibly useful to share, really important, and can only thank them for all that hard work that they've done. And remembering that when you're in a communication world, it's beyond just what we read, it's also what we see. So they do things like the new fairness graphic was done in conjunction with the communications team. So, you know, a lot of it is what we don't see as well as what we see. So they do a really, really great job. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments and a great plug there for the cost of living section on the council's website as well, which has got a wealth of information and important that we continue to push that out. So thank you for those comments. I see no other interventions, so can I take this as agreed? Thank you very much. Willie?
Yeah, thank you. Item five, then, before you, the chief social work officer, annual report. You asked to agree the recommendations.
As usual with this very significant and important document, I will invite the chief social work officer to provide an introduction. So Diane, over to you, please.
Yeah, thank you. So good evening, folks. You'll be aware that each local authority has the responsibility to appoint a chief social work officer to provide professional leadership and advise elected members in the IGB. And we also have to provide an annual report. So I'm delighted to present the chief social work officer report for the period twenty twenty one to twenty two. The report before you said, said the positive work which was undertaken across our children and families, community justice and adult care services. We provide quality services, protect vulnerable people, children and families, and aim to improve the lives of those that we work alongside, including young and adult carers. There are many examples of positive actions and improved performance throughout the report. And we've continued to demonstrate innovative work, working collaboratively with partners and those in receipt of support. Some of the examples highlighted in the report include working with Prison Scotland to develop the Bella Unit, the first women's community custody unit in Scotland, a positive inspection of children and young people at risk of harm, which has led to a range of developments, including improvements in our approaches to working with adolescents, initiatives to support those we've affected by long Covid and an increase in self-directed support uptake, a refresh of the work for carers through the strategic plan of caring for Dundee too, and continuing to deliver services during a pandemic, adjusting our available resources to deliver responsive, safe services with a focus on reducing harm. Our workforce are a most important resource that we have, and we've developed training and development programmes to support our approaches. These include public protection training, trauma-informed training, mental health officer training, palleting a programme for newly qualified social workers and options for professional and career development. My report recognises that we also face challenges and lists opportunities for improvement. We recognise that our staff are at the front line of the pandemic and they are tired and expressing we are experiencing difficulties in recruitment and retention. This is a national issue and we'll look for local initiatives to make these crucial roles as attractive as possible to new recruits. We continue to support the wellbeing of our staff through our employee wellbeing support service, team reflection and resilience programme and implementation of trauma-informed approaches. The introduction of the National Care Service Bill presents a level of uncertainty, but we will work hard to participate in future planning to retain local knowledge and expertise and a continuation of value-based services in Dundee that reflect our local needs. While this is the chief social work officer report, it's really the report of all social work and social care staff. So finally, I want to express my personal gratitude and pride in the staff working in Dundee. Their commitment and ability to continue to provide exceptional care and support is to be commended. I recommend the report to you and seeking your approval for the report to be submitted to the Scottish Government. Happy to take any questions. And I have both Glynn Lloyd and I believe Alison Lookers on the call as well. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Diane. That's very much appreciated. And I would like to echo, you know, the words that you've said there in terms of the achievements of social work services and social care services. And of course, the significant amount of challenges that have been dealt with, I suppose, over the last period of time. And I think it's incredibly important to recognise that often the teams that are referred to in this report are working with or in some of the most harrowing and challenging circumstances. And they do do an incredible job. They're very much the kind of fifth emergency service for many people in the city. I'm sure others will agree with that as well. And I think, as you say, this report is wide-ranging. There's always a lot of detail. And I'm sure there'll be a number of questions from elected members as well. But throughout all those questions, I know that I speak for all elected members when I want to put my thanks and theirs on record to the teams. And I hope that can be passed back after this meeting as well. I'll come to councillor El Nakla first.
Thank you. And yes, thank you to all your team who have worked through really, really difficult times over the past few years. I had a question. I know that it is a national issue, but it does come down to local authorities. And I just wondered, what is your strategy with regards to recruiting more social care workers? I'm sure all of us are having concerns from constituents regarding situations that are quite dangerous or unmanageable because unfortunately we can't get the care staff. So I was just wondering if there's a strategy in place and how you think we can really, because it is a crisis, you know, how is it being managed as one? And that'd be really helpful. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I'm very conscious that sometimes when we get into large national recruitment, what we end up doing is actually moving staff from one area to another. So we've got to be quite mindful of how we take a very local approach in order to support staff. Kind of things we're looking at is working with the colleges to ensure that we've got kind of pathways to recruit people into our services to make that attractive. From the third sector, we've looked recently from the IGB to make sure that we're providing the living wage to staff, that we've got a fair work programme in place, so that it's not just in relation to our own staff, but right across the piece. And we'll do things like we're working with Robin and his team at this point to consider what we might do in terms of working with other areas in order to attract staff, recruit staff, and make sure that the pathways into employment are as simple as possible and that we offer those opportunities to people who might not normally have come towards our services in order to seek employment. So looking at a range of things in order to try to consider how we might actually do that. But it's about actually selling that this is a really good service to work in going forward.
Yeah, that's helpful. Just add one more.
Yeah, supplementally.
Thank you. Yeah, it's just about, I know that sometimes we can get in the habit of this is we've always done something. But like I say, when it is a crisis, it's sometimes, and if you feel this has already happened, that'd be good to hear that those barriers that stop people getting into work, the workforce, are maybe trying to be removed so that actually, you know, it is flexible hours. So, you know, parents with children can fit it around. So again, it's maybe just thinking a little bit out of the box. I'm not saying that you're not doing that at all. But I just, I'm aware of like how difficult a time it is for you all and for the residents and for people that are stuck in hospital beds when they need to be home. So, yeah, just again, maybe as a qualities officer, just being aware of the barriers that maybe we can as an employer reduce, remove, bend, reshape, redesign, just whatever it needs.
Thanks very much for that comment and question. We will come on to Bailey Keenan next. Bailey Keenan, sorry, you're on mute.
See, a fairly positive report. There's a lot of things in there that, you know, we're maybe just skirting around the edges at the moment when we look at young asylum seekers and we've only received, I think, six, it mentions within the report. How many do you think we will eventually end up receiving? And how are we best supporting them and their families, given that they've came out of trauma? And I know that we've got a number of other asylum seekers or here because of Ukraine, you know, that will be desperate to get back to their own country when there's some level of stability. But surely that's a real issue. And how do we see that as a pressure on the service going forward? I'd probably like to come back on a couple of other things as well in relation to the revolving door of people going in and out of hospital, so many days after getting out. And obviously recruitment, as was mentioned earlier.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll come to Diane, I suppose, just to say, to be fair to Diane, I don't think she'll be able to predict the future number that we may or may not end up with. But I think the reality is, you know, we've stood tall in terms of the response to the Syrian, the Afghan, the Ukrainian refugee crisis. And I think, again, I have tremendous pride in what the teams have achieved in very difficult circumstances and often on the edge of the desk because of the significant workload that they're under. But Diane, do you want to come back on this specific point? And then I'll come back to Bailey Keenan for his further question.
Yes, thank you. It's quite a complicated picture in terms of people coming into the country, Bailey Keenan. But if I start with the unaccompanied children, which I think you're referring to in terms of the numbers. So the way that it's been managed at a national level is that each local authority has been allocated a proportion of young people. And as those young people come through, they're then allocated to different local authorities. And it's almost done on a rotor basis so that we understand how many young people will come to us and when they will be coming. So it's been managed relatively well. Young people coming obviously present challenges. Those challenges can be quite varied. We're working with third sector organisations to provide that support. Alison Lookers and Glynn are both on the call. Alison's actually been leading a lot of that work when it comes to unaccompanied young people. And I'm sure we could be able to give you more information. So while we've only taken six, that's because that's the numbers that have been allocated to us as opposed to us putting a limit on the number of unaccompanied young children that can come through. And that's the asylum seeker programme. Similar work is ongoing in terms of Ukraine. So in regards to Ukraine, they are looking for young people who might be needing that support and there'll be a pathway put in place for them. To date, we've not had anybody come to us who is a young person unaccompanied under the Ukraine scheme. Now, again, that's just because no one has been identified that's come to Dundee at this particular point in time. And I would imagine that majority of young people will be supported at the point where they arrive in the country, particularly in Scotland. That would be most likely Edinburgh or Glasgow, rather than moving them across the cities at this time. When it comes to the kind of pressures on services, obviously in terms of young people, they'll come in and access services within children and families, adults who are coming into the city. We've had a number of programmes put in place. So we're looking at healthcare support going into services. We're looking to potentially identify a local agreement so that GPs can actually support Ukrainian people in a more organised way. We've got kind of health services going in to provide clinics in the services. But we also have a number of young people actually that are members of families with, from Ukraine, accessing our education resources. And that isn't, there's a point in seeing us not putting pressure on our services because it is. And I think we probably didn't anticipate the large numbers that would come to Dundee because we have ended up being a welcome unit in terms of our hotels and receiving people when they first come into the city. So we're working through that. We're working at T side level to identify appropriate resources for people so that we're able to offer people kind of more sustainable solutions going forward. I think that covers the majority of the stuff around EU and Ukraine and unaccompanied children. Bailey Keenan, has that answered most of your questions?
I mean, I'm happy that, I realise it's a pretty complex area to deal with. I just think that some kids will present at different times, the different part of the trauma that they've came across in their life. I suppose there might be a sigh of relief that they're out for the worst of it. But when it comes back playing in their mind a bit later, that might be when we need that further intervention. But, you know, quite happy that people will be looking out for that. The other sort of questions.
Yep, go for it.
Other questions were around the sort of readmission rates to hospitals and, you know, going back into hospital or going in and out of hospital due to trips and falls. And I know that I ask this on a regular scrutiny committee, always get told it's never really as bad as what it is. But, you know, given that the amount of bed blocking that appears to be going on, filling hospitals back up with people that have got out twenty eight days beforehand, can it be that a good thing? Given that, you know, you kind of get in front end of hospitals at the moment because they're queuing up emergency services. So if you kind of filter them through the system, we've got a huge problem. And that can only get worse as we kind of take them out of hospital and deal in social care with them. So, you know, what are the actions that were taken to address that particular issues around these revisits to hospitals? And what sort of measures of success were seen that reduce it? So I know that insane blood blocking, by the way, I was in visiting Perth Hospital the other day and there's a ward up there that is full, all people looking to get out. They could be Dundee people. Because obviously the catchment area of where you get sent for operations and the like.
Thanks. Sorry, Diane, before you come in, Bailey Dawson, you've got a point of order?
I heard you.
Yeah, it seems to be a team's thing tonight. I unclicked and then it clicked back on again. Yeah, given the, our convenor and the limited amount of business you've got left on your agenda, it might be worthwhile suspending the relevant standing order to allow the business to be seen through.
I think that's very sensible at this stage. Any dissenting voices or can we agree to suspend standing orders to continue the meeting past half eight?
Okay, but if some of the labour group that may work shifts need to go, I'll just have to accept that.
Okay, thanks, Kevin. Thanks, everyone. Okay, Diane, we'll come back to you on the substance of the report. Only before I bring you in again, the one thing I would say, if we do have detailed questions, it's also helpful to ask them in advance so that we can provide the totality of information. Because I know Diane has lots of information at your fingertips on all of these issues that perhaps can be shared after the meeting as well, because it's always difficult to, I suppose, provide an update in the detail that sometimes we require. So maybe there's some aspects that you might want to follow up after the meeting. But I'll come to you, Diane.
Yes, certainly. Bailey Keenan, I think we've provided a report for you previously, which set out some of the details because it is correct, it's rather a complex situation. And sometimes it's about the way we measure things. And sometimes it's about the approaches that are taken. In relation to the number of people going into hospital, we have introduced services through Tarif House, which provides both step up beds and step down beds. And in order, in sport, we've also got enhanced care sports services, which will actually go out and see people and provide almost a hospital home approach. So there are a number of initiatives which support that aspect of people who may be going into hospital. We have a lot of work being delivered around Falls in Dundee in terms of pathways and support, occupational, not occupational, physiotherapy support, et cetera. And again, I'd be happy to provide a more detailed report that is there. I think the difficulties around the occupancy of beds does come back to the availability of social care support. I'm very aware that Perth PRI had a significant issue recently in terms of discharging people. And while there may be some Dundee people, not the majority of them will be there because most people will go down, step down from acute services to places like Royal Victoria Hospital. But there will be some people who are in Dundee who'll be in for different types of operations. So a lot of work going on. Happy to provide some additional information following the meeting for members.
Thanks very much, Diane. That's appreciated. Councillor Lynn?
Yeah, I think councillor Keenan painted a very bleak picture just there a minute ago regarding healthcare provision in Dundee. He mentioned A and E, for example, and NHS T side is the best performing board in the whole of Scotland in terms of the number of, the percentage of people who are seen within a four hour time scale after arrival at A and E. And I think they're sitting at ninety six percent at the moment. Certainly never been lower than ninety. Another couple of things that he said, I just don't agree with. But that, anyway, I wouldn't have mentioned that unless councillor Keenan had got my back up a wee bit. I was going to ask the question that Nadia was going to ask, so I won't ask that. Although it's really, really important that we get the right number of staff into field positions. So crucial. As I did at the IGB last week in my swan song speech before I relinquished the chair to Pat Kilpatrick, I'm now the vice chair. I think this is probably an opportune time to thank all the staff who've worked so hard during the period of Covid, particularly those frontline staff providing social care for people in their own homes. And, you know, given the amount of. And, you know, given the amount of alarmism, and rightly so, people were very ill with with COVID. Many died. And given that amount of alarmism, which is doubly notable, that they they continued, those staff continued to go into homes and risking their own health to make sure that our most vulnerable citizens were looked after. So well done. And we've got an exciting time ahead in Dundee with the opening later this year, early next year of the Community Wellbeing Centre and also all the work that we have going on to try and reduce the awful toll of drug deaths, which has already seen some positive results and I know will continue to. So thanks, Diane, to you and the entire team for for providing those much needed services. Because at the end of the day, those services are all about life and death. So thank you.
Thanks very, very, very much for your comments, councillor Lynn. I think they're incredibly well received, I'm sure, from Diane and the team, and certainly Meredith. And I'll come on to councillor McKervin next.
Thanks, Chair. Hi, Diane. Looking at the the report, page one, two, five of the committee papers, what, four, page forty three, the actual report, the challenges for the year ahead. Now, as you're well aware, we're over half, we're seven months into that challenge for the year ahead. Now, I'd just like, I'd be interested to know the here and now. So what are the greatest challenges that you're faced with now that you're experiencing?
Diane, do you want to come back on that?
Yes, certainly. I'm just pulling up the the page. My computer's being a bit sticky. I mean, I would say that one of our biggest challenges, councillor McKervin, is absolutely about the retention and recruitment of staff at this particular point in time. It's causing pressures right across the piece in terms of everywhere that we work. It's not unique. But it's right across all of our services and continuing to look at how we manage to do that. And what we have to do at times like this is start to think about how we prioritise the workforce to deliver the areas that are most crucial and most kind of relevant in terms of protection, safety from harm, but also delivering services across the piece. So that I would suggest would be, I wouldn't suggest, I would state is our biggest challenge at this particular point in time in terms of how we want to go forward. And that can have implications in terms of how we continue to improve our services and redesign and recruit. But we're managing to do that against what is a challenging time in terms of the support that we're delivering. And we continue to kind of manage and look at how we continue to improve and where we can do so within the resources that we've got. So I would, I would say that that absolutely is our biggest challenge and can impact on everything else that we do.
Thanks for that, Diane.
Thanks very much for the question. Thanks, Diane, for that response. And councillor Finnegan, you get the last word.
Oh, good. That's good because anything health and social care, I just love it. The reason, I want to go back to councillor Lynn about A and E being the best. Could I just say that is because we've got the best health and social care staff and the community stopping people going into A and E in the first place? And I'd just like to ask a question though. Recruitment and retention of social care workers is really difficult just now. I understand that. I mean, I've visited Minas Hill House and Janet Brom and the majority of the shift was covered by agency staff, which is not good, although some of them are regular agency staff. I understand there was an interview, advert went out and interviews, but nobody was actually employed from the interviews, even though they were agency staff that we have on shift. So they're good enough to be agency staff, but not good enough to be employed. So I'm just wondering, is there any work, as a previous lecturer for Dundee and Angus College here, health and social care? Are these people who are shown an interest in working in social care, if they don't meet the criteria interview, are they given a few skills, help with that? Or are they being directed to the college to get more qualifications? What's been done to harness the people that want to come into work in the communities or in residential homes within the health and social care sector? And like that, staff that are working, they're very loyal and they're brilliant. And I just want them to know that. And then I know you know that, Diane, as well. I'm just thinking, how could we encourage people to come on and become social carers?
Thanks for the question. I think that's a really important point that you make and one that has been discussed quite recently. In fact, Diane, I'm sure you're about to tell us, but it goes back to your initial point around that work with employability as well and working not only with the college but with our own in-house employability team and making sure that we are promoting those positions in a really effective way that also communicates the value of the job. Not just, you know, here's your salary and here's what you'll do, but actually that value-based employment is so important and it's the ethos that people bring to. And I know that because I've got relatives that work in other local authority areas that do the same job as well. And I think it's incredible. But Diane, do you want to come back on the specifics of that?
Yeah, Chair, you've probably covered most of what I would say in terms of, you know, the work that we are doing, the work we're looking. With a very recent conversation with Robin and his team just in the last week or two, actually, to consider is there anything else that we need to do? I'm not aware of the specific situation you're talking about in regards to the care homes. I am aware that they are having to use agency staff in order to support that. And you're relying on the agency to ensure that the staff are skilled and able to do the job. And we would feedback if we had any concerns, and I'm not aware of any concerns being raised at this particular point in time. And one of the issues about social care is that it is a registered service. It's a service which sets out specific qualifications for different posts. In fact, we currently have our staff on S V Q two, but we actually believe it's an S V Q three because the complexity of the work that is ongoing and the people that we work with probably takes up into that other level. And sometimes that can be off-putting for staff in terms of how we work with it. So it's absolutely important that we recognise the work that the colleges are doing, that we work closely with them. We have got health and social care academies. Sometimes we believe that that staff feel that working in the health service is a bit more attractive than working in communities. And that's because they're actually quite often independent workers. And they're out there doing that job on their own, whereas if you're in a hospital, you've got colleagues and somebody on site can absolutely support that. So it's about getting all of those things right, councillor Finnegan, in order to make sure that we are supporting and attracting people as much as we can. We do do training on site. We will accept people who are able to do that qualification, but it is a skilled job.
Thanks very much for that. Thanks for all the questions and contributions on that item. That's been really helpful. And again, Diane, you get a sense of the appreciation, I think, from all elected members. So thank you very much for introducing that report as well. And with that, can I take this item as agreed? Thank you very much. Willie.
Yeah, thank you. Item six then before he's the gender note and accommodation for adults with additional specification and cool type project. You're asked to read the terms of the note.
Again, I think this is a very good use of the ninety four thousand two hundred and forty eight pounds and obviously supports some of the activities that we're very keen on seeing progressed in these areas with new accommodation being provided. Any questions, comments on this? No? Can I take that as agreed? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Convenor, item seven then before he's the hospital fund and Johnston bequest. Again, you're asked to read the terms of the gender note.
Again, I think it's self-explanatory. I think, again, value for money, I think it's incredible to see that the equivalent of around twenty pound is leveraged for every one pound that's spent. And this is obviously something that we considered at committee, well, some time ago now, in terms of how that funding would be deployed. And I think certainly from the feedback that I've received, that has been successful. And I referenced this recently at the Cost of Living Summit in discussion with the Pensioners Forum and some of the people that were participating in that event as well. And I think there's more to do in terms of promoting that role and how it's accessed. But Bailey McPherson.
Yeah, my point's nothing to do with that. It's to do with the fact that you were actually, pardon me, seeking retrospective approval. I actually saw this popped up in the external auditors report for the past financial year. And I presume that's why it's not coming to committee tonight. I presume, I mean, we should never be approving things retrospectively. Clearly, they should come timiously to committee at the correct time. And I was just really wondering if officers could indicate us why that's happened. And I just to get reassurance in place that we ensure that we do get approval at the correct time, which I'm sure we do, but I just really want assurances as to that that's not something that will happen on a regular basis. Thank you, convenor.
Thanks, Bailey McPherson. I think you'll not be surprised to hear I've had the same conversation. And I think in this occasion, whilst it's a very good project, and I think we'd all unanimously agree, I will bring in the chief executive to respond to that point initially. Greg.
Thanks, convenor, and thanks, Bailey McPherson. I can give you the assurance that we will not be in this position going forward. The note outlines we are seeking retrospective approval and there was significant turnover due to retirement within the service. Therefore, unfortunately, this happened. But be assured that this will not happen again and sufficient controls are in place to make sure that committee is agreeing the applications or process or approval before we're in that current financial year.
Okay, I'm grateful for that. I think all I'm really seeking is that, you know, this isn't something that's going to repeat itself. And I'm grateful for the chief executive's assurances in that regard.
Thanks very much, Fraser. Councillor McHugh. You're on mute, Dorothy.
Sorry, just a brief comment to say that the Citizens Advice Bureau provides wonderful service, particularly to older people across the city in terms of helping them to apply for benefits that they're entitled to. And I'd support anything, you know, that would allow them to carry that on. They do really valuable work.
Thanks very much, Dorothy. Again, I think I wholeheartedly agree with you as a former board member of Citizens Advice Bureau as well. So thanks for that comment. Seen no other comments or questions on this, so can I take that as agreed, please? Thank you very much. Willie.
Yeah, thank you. There are many items confidential in the committee. We wish to deal with this in the usual way.
I do have a comment on this item, so I'm going to ask at this point if we can ask members of the public and press to leave the call, please.